In order and ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance and Ms. Karen Brown.
I'm right here.
Okay, you come forward and if you could lead us in the pledge, we'd greatly appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No, you can sit down for a moment. Actually, we're going to bring you back up here. No, you might as well stay, actually. Just one quick administrative point, even though this is not our typical meeting day, it's the third Wednesday of the month, because we changed this meeting to the fourth Wednesday of the month back when we approved our full calendar, this is a regular meeting as opposed to possibly a special meeting. There are just some technical differences that don't necessarily impact anybody, but in case you were wondering. And first up, we have some special recognition for Ms. Karen Brown, a member of the Chamber Choir, an a cappella group at Fairfield Ludlow High School, three times a participant in the Western Region High School Festival, and awarded a full scholarship to Berklee College of Music, a five-week program for the summer coming up in 2017. And you also are singing the National Anthem at the Webster Bank Arena on February 7th coming up here, so congratulations on all of that. It's come to our attention that you were singing the National Anthem at the Professional Bull Riders 2017 Seasoned Review at Madison Square Garden.
Yes.
Playing the Garden's like a big deal, I hear. And that was on January 8th.
Yes.
So, one, we want to formally recognize you, congratulate you on those accomplishments. Can you tell us a little bit about what got you into singing the National Anthem and why you seem to be so well-known for?
Sure. Well, I've sang the anthem before. I sang it at our Veterans Day concert at school. I also sang it at the Colony Grill 5K Hot Oil Run, which is fun. And then, one of my friends actually approached me, his dad works for the Bull Riding Company, and they were looking for video submissions, and so I submitted a video, and a couple weeks later, they told me that I got it, and so I was very happy. And yeah, it was just an overall fun day. My family and friends were able to come, and just singing at the Garden was incredible. I wasn't that nervous, surprisingly, but it was so much fun singing for such a patriotic audience. There was American flags everywhere, and everyone was just so nice and welcoming, so yeah, it was overall a great experience.
Wow, fantastic. Any comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think it's fantastic. You know, where do you go from swinging in Madison Square Garden?
You know, right?
And you've also babysat for my kids before.
Yes.
For those of you at home looking for a good, reliable babysitter, I can vouch for her. And best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
I mean, this is really quite an honor to have so more Fairfielders doing great things.
Great job, we're all proud of you.
Thank you.
No, fantastic. And "The Star Spangled Banner" is, I understand, is one of the harder songs to sing.
Yes.
Has that presented any particular problems for you?
Um, not really. Less song in general, I don't know, I love this song. Maybe the words is a little tricky, like remembering the words was a little hard, but I know I got through it. It was good.
Okay, well, congratulations on that.
Yeah.
We also have a certificate for you.
Oh, thank you.
That we'd like to present.
Gentlemen, and I am not going to shake your hand because I'm fighting a cold, but I just want to hand a certificate.
Thank you.
And let my colleagues, congratulations. Well, no, we do a picture.
Thank you.
Come over here and we'll do it. If you would. All right. Hold that. Good? All right.
Okay, thank you so much.
Now, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, to consider and act upon the minutes of a regular meeting of January 4th, 2017, may I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any edits or changes?
Yeah, I did have one thing.
Okay.
Sheila, last page. After we came out of executive session, it says, "Selectmen, Timmy, Act Motion to Approve Lesser's Recommendation and Second Motion."
I don't believe we had a motion after that, Mike. We were just discussing something, correct? So there was no recommendation from Lesser, so we didn't act on anything. The... I just don't remember taking...
There were two motions, I believe, based on two cases we discussed.
No, that was the month before.
That was four.
Yeah, this was the one we were talking about. Okay, well, let's... Sheila, if we could...
I'll go by and look at the...
If you would, please.
Yeah, could you? Because I just don't... We came out, we voted to come out of executive session, and that was it.
Yep, and I'm sorry, I'm getting confused between the two.
No, the month before, you're right.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. So, we'll take no action on the minutes at this point, if that's okay with the board, until we get that clarified. Moving on, next up, resignations from the Economic Development Commission. Donna Fornaro, Democrat, 57 Riverside Drive. Her term was 11/16 to 11/21, and the resignation date was January 17th, 2017. Excuse me. And B, Water Pollution Control Authority, Brian Thompson, Republican, 137 Elm Street. His term was from 11/2 to 11/16, and resignation date was January 18th. All right, next up, we have a batch of appointments. Do we want to take those one at a time, or do we want to... How do we want to do this?
We'll take each commission one at a time.
Okay, is that okay with you, Mr. Bates?
That's fine.
All right. To here, consider and act upon the following appointments for the Golf Commission. Liam Herron, Republican, 53 Forest Avenue, for a term of 4/15 to 4/20, and this is to fill a vacancy for Brendan O'Hara, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
That item is now before us. I believe Mr. Herron is here. There we are, good. Any questions for Mr. Herron, or any comments?
Yeah, I'm excited. I spoke to him earlier tonight. I'm excited that he's going to serve on the Golf Commission. It's a busy committee right now, there's a lot going on. There's the conversation of a new clubhouse down the future, and as the course gains, well, I mean, two courses, but as the Smith Richardson Course gains more popularity, more use comes, and it becomes more and more of a destination golf course, we keep receiving awards for it. So, you're going on a commission right now, which has been operating as a machine, and I look forward to your contributions.
Okay, Mr. Bates?
Yeah, second that. I had a nice conversation with him. He brought up a couple things that I had failed to think about, about maybe possibly some, expanding some youth programs up there. And at the Dickman Course, I thought that was some great idea, so I look forward to his contributions.
Same here. I really enjoyed our conversation. I want to thank you for stepping up to volunteer, and this is a very critical time, as was mentioned, in the Smith Richardson Golf Course kind of future here, so thank you again for stepping up. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Herron, thank you. I should point out, we have a number of appointments here, any of the appointees that would like to stay around. Ms. Brown, our town clerk, has graciously volunteered to swear you in here, so you don't have to make a separate trip to the town clerk's office. Next up, the Historic District Commission. To here, consider and act upon the following appointments. Arthur Gravinas, Republican, 2829 Bronson Road, for a term 11/14 to 11/19, and this is to fill a vacancy for Christopher Shea, who is moving to full member. And Rosina Negron, unaffiliated, 952 Old Post Road, for a term of 11/16 to 11/21 as an alternate, and this is to fill a vacancy for John Morgan, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm excited both are going on the committee. I did have a chance to speak with Art Gravinas, I did not have an opportunity to speak to Rosina, but I certainly got enough emails and telephone calls from others who supported you, so I'm happy to see and read your qualifications, so I look forward to your contribution.
Mr. Bates?
Yeah, I had occasion to speak with both of them. I think they're, I think they're going to bring some good stuff to the table, and I, you know, Rosina's, her resume was pretty impressive, so I'm happy to have these people, and thanks for getting involved.
And same, I follow up on both those comments, saying that I enjoyed the conversations with both nominees, and Rosina in particular, you bring a very special background of this and some excellent qualifications and credentials as part of this, and I think that's strengthening our Historic District Commission. I think that's, that's good for the town and good for protecting our heritage in the long run, because that's really what this commission is doing over time. Any comments from the public on either of these two appointees? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations to both of you. Next up, to here, consider and act upon the following appointment from the Human Services Commission. Kristen Burbank, Democrat, 83 Grist Mill Lane, for a term of 4/16 to 4/20, and this is to fill a vacancy for Marc Andre, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments from the board?
We're doing both. Are we doing one at a time?
No, just one. This is just Kristen Burbank at the moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Quick thing, just procedural, 4/16, is that the term? It's just sticking out to me now. Not November?
Uh, this is...
Is this one of those midterm ones?
Uh, I believe, 16/4/20. Marc Andre, whose term expired, and I'm not sure if he stepped down as of March 31st, or I predict, I'm sure he would step down as of March 31st.
Okay, all right, but you're...
I'm just not...
It's not a November appointment, it's an April appointment, that's what I'm getting at.
Correct.
Okay, so you know that. It's an April appointment. Okay.
All right, any further comments or conversation?
Yeah, I had a, I had a nice discussion with Kristen. I think, when I think Human Services Commission, a lot of the time, I think about Senior Center, and she has, she was more interested in youth, and I think that's going to bring a nice dynamic to that, to that commission, add a nice little facet to it.
I'm excited to have her join the commission as well.
And I will agree with Mr. Bates, and I think that as our Human Services Commission evolves, we've made a lot of progress in terms of our Senior Center, our senior services and program enhancements, what also falls under that umbrella is our social services component. And I was thrilled that Kristen was interested in contributing on that side, and I think we're trying to build up on the commission people with that interest and background to help us fully expand that. So, any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I do have a note here that Kristen was not able to join us today, she apparently is traveling out of the country today. But Kristen, wherever you are, thank you very much for stepping up as a volunteer.
I was looking.
All right, next up, to here, consider and act upon following appointment to the Shellfish Commission. Michael Harwood, unaffiliated, 233 Colony Street, and this is to fill a vacancy for Sandy Wakeman, whose term expired, and this is a term for 11/16 to 11/21. Eric C. Johnson, Republican, 114 Merton Street, and this is a term for 11/16 to 11/21, and this is to fill a vacancy by Robert Billick, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, any comments from the board?
Yes, I'm really enthused that Eric Johnson's volunteered to go on the Shellfish Commission. Eric's been a very active member in the community. His company, Rocco Associates, has been sponsoring movie nights at the beach and a whole bunch of other things. I believe this year, they won the PAL Whiffle Ball Tournament.
Not the PAL, the Townwide Whiffle Ball Tournament.
Oh, the Townwide Whiffle Ball Tournament. Is that sponsored by PAL?
Uh, no.
No.
Much to the dismay of police, fire, DPW, Thea, and a host of other town teams that played.
Well, I can say Team Rocco Associates won, led by Mr. Johnson. And prior to that, Mr. Johnson ran Westport Outfitters, where he had a day-to-day knowledge of what's going on among our sound, and he got to understand the permitting process and the health and the well-being of our sound, so I'm really excited about his joining the commission moving forward.
Okay, very good. Mr. Bates?
No, I'd like to echo those comments. I think they're both qualified. I think it's, the Shellfish Commission's come a long way over the years. I would like to add, though, that the two individuals that are leaving had a great contribution to that, and we're going to miss them, and you've got some big shoes to fill, but I look forward to your contributions.
Yeah, no question. The Shellfish Commission is one of those things that helps us focus on one of those unique characteristics in Fairfield, that we can actually harvest shellfish. And I think that the idea, and I love the clinic they hold every spring, that lets us train youth, and some of us adults that aren't so young, to go down and learn how to clam and that type of thing, and again, something that's uniquely Fairfield, but it's something that has shared with Fairfield for generations, and I'm thrilled with that. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Harwood, Mr. Johnson, you both here? Okay, good, well, congratulations and thank you. All right, next up, to here, consider and act upon appointment to the Solid Waste Commission, Solid Waste and Recycling Commission. This also requires RTM approval, and it's Andrew Becker, Republican, 228 Buena Vista Road, for a term of 11/16 to 11/20. This is to fill a vacancy for Sharon Pastelli, whose term expired, and Hugh Dolan, Republican, 1775 Congress Street, for a term of 11/16 to 11/20, to fill a vacancy for Wendy Martiniz, who resigned in the previous term. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Right, this item's now before us, any comments from the board?
I've spoken to both of these individuals. I look forward to their contributions. I know that they both come at this with a passion in what they do during their day work and what they see throughout the course of the day, so I look forward to their contributions.
Mr. Bates?
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. I'm glad we got another Becker involved in town politics, welcome. And Mr. Dolan, I've known for years, I'm looking forward to having him on.
Okay, very good. I think that when you talk about recycling, you talk about where the world is today, that's a very important component, and I think that it's important that Fairfield is doing our best effort in that, to help the environment, and to the degree it can, help the economy in terms of what's taken going forward. Any further comments from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public? Yes, if you please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Sorry, Paige.
Having served on this board, I would just like...
Paige, if you would, your name and address.
Paige Turman, 803 Fairfield Beach Road.
Thank you.
I would just like to compliment Sharon Pastelli, who was working on this board when I was there, and she has done a phenomenal job, and I think the town should be very grateful for the hard work she put into it.
Good, thank you, thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I see that Mr. Dolan has just got here.
Okay, oh, good, good. There's no question that the passion and enthusiasm of the volunteers on this board have done great work for the town, and thank you for pointing that out, Paige. Any, are we ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Becker, Mr. Dolan, thank you very much for volunteering, and congratulations. And Mr. Dolan, since you just got here, when we're done with this group of appointments, Betsy Brown, our town clerk, has agreed to stay and swear you all in, so you don't have to make a separate stop over to her office. So, next up is the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. To here, act and consider, consider, sorry. To here, consider and act upon the appointment of Albert Grauer, Republican, 1537 Fairfield Beach Road, for a term of 11/13 to 11/17 as an alternate, and this is to fill a vacancy for Thomas Noonan, who moved to a full member. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments from the board?
I'd just like to say I'm happy to see Rick Grauer is back in town service after an absence of a month, is that so? Rick was an active participant in the Flood and Erosion Board for basically my entire life, so you going on to Town Planning and Zoning Commission's a welcome adjustment, so I hope you enjoy your time on that.
Okay, Mr. Bates?
Yeah, Rick, congratulations. You can have your hands full, and we look forward to it.
All right. Mr. Grauer, as was pointed out, you've got a long history of community service to the town, and I want to thank you for continuing in that regard. And again, volunteering for our town is one of the things that both, our town couldn't do without, the expertise of volunteers that step up, and it's also critical in terms of keeping Fairfield as special as it is. I want to thank all the appointees for their help there. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Brown. All right, next up, to here, act and consider on the Water Pollution Control Authority, Joseph Devanzo, Republican, 1446 Jennings Road, for a term of 11/16 to 11/20, and this is to fill a vacancy for Brian Thompson, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments from the board?
I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Devanzo. I look forward to your contributions. There's a meeting tonight, so be prepared.
Yeah, I had a nice discussion with Joe also. It was a, good luck, I think you're going to bring a nice, a nice aspect to the table, and I look forward to your contributions.
The, I agree. Mr. Devanzo's been involved in community service for a number of years, and we're thrilled that he's stepping up to help us out on the town side here. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Devanzo. Yes, Betsy, did you want to, where's Betsy? Did you want to do it here, or do you want to do it outside?
I'm going to do it out in the hallway, because it's about 22 degrees cooler.
Okay, well, then, if I could ask all the recently appointed volunteers to join Betsy out in the hallway, so we can swear you in, and you can officially begin working for the town.
Except if you need our team to...
Oh, that's right, we've got, solid waste and recycling requires RTM approval, so that would be a bit premature. And Sheila, could you note that Kristen Burbank was not here and needs to be sworn in at a separate time? And then, the solid waste and recycling folks need to be approved by the RTM before they can be sworn in. Forgive me, the next item up is for Betsy Brown, so we're going to have to wait until she's done swearing in to come back. Guys, forgive me for not checking, I'm fighting a cold here, it's been a bear for a couple weeks. All right, the next item up is from the town clerk, and to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the town clerk. Whereas Lori McCardle, who was elected selectman in 2015, has resigned, and whereas the remaining selectmen have appointed a selectman to take her place, and whereas pursuant to Section 9-222 of the Connecticut General Statutes, a petition has been submitted to the Fairfield Town Clerk requesting a special election for the position held by said newly-appointed selectman, and whereas said position has been certified by the Fairfield Town Clerk, was called said special election for January 6, 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that a special election for the position held by the newly-appointed selectman for the town of Fairfield shall be held on June 6, 2017. Said election to be held in accordance with the provisions of Section 9-222, 9-164, and 9-450, and 9-459 of Connecticut General Statutes. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, that item is now before us.
I'd like to make an amendment to this.
Okay.
I move that this item be amended to read as follows. Whereas the Republican Lori McCardle, who was elected selectman in 2015, resigned on December 1, 2016, from her elective office pursuant to Section 2.4 of the Town Charter, and whereas, Section 6.3B of the Town Charter sets forth the method for filling a vacancy on the Board of Selectmen as follows. At any time a vacancy occurs on the Board of Selectmen, including first selectman, a replacement who shall be registered with the same political party as the person vacating the office shall be designated by the remaining selectman. If the selectmen designate one of themselves to fill the vacancy, they shall designate another elector to fill the vacancy of selectmen. So created. If the vacancy is not filled within 30 days, the vacancy shall be filled in accordance with the procedure set forth in Chapter 146 of the General Statutes. And whereas pursuant to Section 6.3 of the Town Charter, the remaining members of the Board of Selectmen voted on December 7, 2016, to designate Republican Edward Bateson to fill the vacancy created by Lori McCardle. And whereas Edward Bateson was duly sworn into office within 30 days of said vacancy, and whereas pursuant to 9-222 of Chapter 146 of the General Statutes, the town clerk has certified petitions to the Board seeking a special election for the selectman office now held by Edward Bateson. And whereas pursuant to Section 9-164 of Chapter 146 of the General Statutes, the Board of Selectmen determine the date of such special election, if any shall be held as provided under said Chapter 146. And whereas pursuant to the plain meaning of Section 6.3B of the Charter, there is no need to fill a vacancy on the Board of Selectmen, in accordance with procedure, the procedure set forth in Chapter 146 of the General Statutes, because it was filled with, by the selectman within 30 days. Now therefore be it resolved that said petition for special election is void ab initio in sofar as no special election is required or appropriate under the clear and plain meaning of our Town Charter.
Second. Do you have that in writing, so that the secretary may...
I do.
Easily include that?
I do.
Yes, please. All right, the only thing I would offer along those lines is that, that wasn't the interpretation and the ruling by the town attorney, he's not here today, so it'd be something we certainly would want to get his input on. I thought he had submitted a letter as part of... Yeah, we have the letter. See the letter here itself?
Yes, I've, I've read the letter. I disagree with what's written in the letter. I think the language in the Charter is clear and plain, and I believe that this is the right action for the Board of Selectmen to take.
Other than saying that it's the town attorney's job, as defined in the Charter, to interpret the Charter for the very...
I think the language in the Charter is clear and plain, and I believe that this is the right action for the Board of Selectmen to take.
Other than saying that it's the town attorney's job, as defined in the Charter, to interpret the Charter for the various town boards, including this one, since he's not here today, certainly taking this up perhaps at our meeting next week might be appropriate when he's back.
I disagree with that, and I believe we should take it up today, and we can address it.
Yeah, I wouldn't like to entertain him. I would not entertain a motion to table. I think whatever Mr. Lesser has comes back to say, I don't think his position's going to alter mine. I think he was pretty steadfast in his opinion, and I have a different interpretation of what I read. I think our Charter is clear and unequivocal on the matter. And I don't see where he's addressed that at all, and I just think that, I don't think it's going to be anything different. And I, quite frankly, I think what we've written here is the right interpretation.
Yes, and that's why it's up to the town attorney, in fact. Again, define my Charter to make that interpretation, to take such action here if it's not consistent with that, I don't know if that would be a valid action by this board. But we certainly can review that with the town attorney if it's your
Well, I could flip that around and say that I disagree with what's been presented to us, so I think that's improper for me to pass it. What was originally presented, so.
Okay, but what you're originally presented was approved by the town attorney as the proper interpretation of the Charter and state statute.
It's merely advice.
No, it's not. It's actually defined in the Charter that he is the person that defines that.
That's a matter of opinion.
No, actually, no, it's not. It's defined in the Charter.
The same way the special elections divide, defined in the Charter, that if a vacancy has not occurred within 30 days, in this case, we filled it, so we believe we're in the right action doing this.
All right, and I believe that's in combination with the state statute, but certainly would be left to the town attorney to rule on whether this is a valid action. However, I leave it to you to decide what you want to do today.
I believe we vote on this and pass it on and move on to the non-recurring bonding.
Yeah, there's an amendment before the board.
Okay. Any further comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Seeing, oh. Mr. Dwyer?
Philip Dwyer, as one of the people who helped circulate the petitions, I'd only share with you two comments. One is, when we looked at the people who signed the petition, they were maybe 20%, 25% were Republicans and others were independents. And so this was a request by the town residents with 3,200 signatures, which is much more than what was required. And number two, I have no doubt that the organizers, I helped, but I was not one of the organizers, I have no doubt that the organizers will challenge the viewpoint about whether state law trumps Town Charter and whether the viewpoints of the Board of Selectmen by vote trumps the official ruling of the town attorney. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Ms. Ewing?
Judy Ewing, Saskatchewan Harris. I've served on several Charter revision commissions, and from time to time over the years, we've discovered that the Charter in certain aspects is not in compliance with the state statutes. I brought this to the attention of the town attorney, and the answer I got back was that the state statutes prevail in this case, and that next time we have a Charter revision, we should try to make this compliant with the state statutes.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing that was a late in favor vote?
No, it wasn't late at all.
Okay. I just saw your hand go up after that.
It was going down.
Sorry, sorry. So I believe that is a vote on the amendment.
Correct.
The item as amended as before, so any further discussion? Any further comment from the public on the item as amended? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the item passes. Next up, from the Director of Public Works, to here, consider and act upon a resolution entitling a resolution appropriating $2,000, $2,859,433 for the costs associated with the replacement of the Commerce Drive State Street Extension Bridge over Ash Creek, authorizing a grant to fund $2,759,433 for such appropriation, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance the $100,000 of such appropriation. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Is it Mr. Hurley who's going to help us with this? Please.
Good afternoon, selectmen. William Hurley, the Engineering Manager for the Town of Fairfield, asking the Board of Selectmen to hear and consider and act upon a resolution. Did they read the resolution or no?
So far, we've only read what, I've only read into the record what's here. The entire, where's the, we've got your 12-point attachment?
Mm-hmm. You read the resolution.
All right, is there any other resolution other than what's here?
I thought there was. The one that I had. I don't recall getting a bond resolution.
This is part of this pack.
Yeah.
Oh. It's part of the pack.
You don't do that.
The bond, generally no. The bond resolution delineates out what we
In the interest of time, then, basically. Okay, the easiest way to present the project is to compare what was approved in 2015 and 2016 and what is proposed today. For the Commerce Drive Bridge project under the local bridge program, the state had a commitment to fund $1.227 million for the bridge project, which basically represented about 50% of the project costs. The proposal today is to accept a new LoCIP grant, which is Local Transportation Capital Improvements Program, commitment for funding $2.759 million of the bridge project. After two rounds of applications, and with the support of MetroCog, the Regional Planning Agency, and Council of Governments, the state has approved the town's application and seeks the first selectman's signature for the state's commitment to fund letter. Under the LoCIP program, the rules of the grant are the same as they were before, and even a little less stringent than the local bridge program. The major difference is that all the design costs are the municipality's responsibilities, while 100% of the eligible construction costs are paid to the town. So the design, and the design invoices would be shared with the town and the city of Bridgeport. Highlighting the 14 points, the bridge is in poor condition and needs replacement. During the last inspection, the deck has been downgraded to serious condition. The bridge was built in 1929. If you're not familiar with it, it's just past Pepe's on Commerce Drive, near the old Connecticut limo. As I said before, poor condition since 2009. The most recent inspection, the concrete deck and bearing devices received serious ratings. The subsequent, construction phase of the project, which would be anticipated in 2018-19 or 2019-20, would be in the $2.3 to $2.8 million range. The town has received a commitment letter to cover eligible construction costs, which is construction and inspection. The design costs would be shared with the city of Bridgeport, which we would have an agreement with them, similar to past projects. If we do nothing, the, eventually the weight limit of the bridge would be reduced. It would impact local businesses and could eventually, lead to eventual limitations or closures. And loss of grant. The state is quoted in the report as saying, "Failure to replace or repair the bridge may result in the state charging municipalities for extra inspections now that the bridge is on an annual inspection cycle." Down by number 12, their financing, the Town of Fairfield has been determined to be the lead agency and would pay for the design costs, which are estimated at $300,000, in which the city of Bridgeport would give us $150,000. And then, as stated before, the construction would be paid for. So, I mean, that's the recap of the grant. We basically got $1.5 million more for funding for the bridge. And we're just here to have the first selectman be authorized to sign the commitment letter and then appropriate the acceptance of funding for the entire amount of the bridge, in which, as I said, we get $2.7959 million, even before construction on that, so.
Mr. Timmy, I have a question.
I did. Back in late December, the governor made an announcement that all LoCIP projects, if not approved by December 22nd, were not going to be funded until the next fiscal year. Was this approved prior to December 22nd?
This is one of the confusing things. That's LoCIP.
LoCIP.
This is LotSIP. That one little T makes a big difference. The LoCIP are mainly for the town, we've been getting reimbursed for paving roads and stuff like this. The LotSIP programs are specific capital projects that have to go through the region.
I stand corrected.
That's okay.
I just, I do know that they're two separate programs, which sound
When I first saw that too, though, I got worried.
Just to clarify, the LoCIP revenues are generally included within our annual budget as part of general fund revenues, and the LotSIP is a capital program that's included outside the budget.
Correct.
So we definitely have a commitment letter from the state of Connecticut?
Yes.
Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, a quick thing. I just want to understand, we've already approved this a while ago.
Right, the bridge project?
Correct.
Okay, now, all that seems to have changed is that the state's giving us more money, and we're on the hook now for all design fees. So the only thing that's happening is we're increasing
The design portion.
Because now we're on the hook for design. Is that right?
Yeah, we're
The funding, in essence, is restructured?
Right, and now the town's on the hook for
100% of design, and the state does 100% of construction. Is that correct, Mr.?
Correct.
Okay, so now the purpose of this is for us to approve the additional $100,000 and for you to sign to accept all that money?
Correct. And then concurrently, in the resolution, it also mentions that the first, the first selectman is hereby authorized to negotiate the terms of the Bridgeport agreement, so that we get reimbursed by the city.
So we don't have a hand in that, that's just up to you to get the money from Bridgeport?
Yeah, but that is going to be my question. What is, at the moment, what is the commitment from Bridgeport?
It's going through the same process that we have here. I've been told by the Engineering Department, they have allotted $150,000 their share, but it's going through the Bridgeport process.
It sounds like it might be wise for this board to make a contingent on approval of that agreement with Bridgeport. Right now, we're approving everything, whether we get their money or not.
We're approving the 300.
We're approving 3 million, whether we get their money or not.
Yeah, well, the 3 million, but the 2.7 is basically being paid upfront. I mean,
You're right.
Do you want to make a contingent upon the approval of Bridgeport?
I think so, because if we don't get, if we don't get the ready cooperation commitment from Bridgeport, I think it should come back before the boards, so we can determine what the Plan B would be.
Are you going to make that amendment?
Yeah, I'd make the motion that we amend this and make the acceptance contingent on getting the required contribution from the city of Bridgeport for their share of the design phase.
I'll second that.
All right, so that's
And also
The amendment is before us. Any further conversation on the amendment?
No.
Any comments from the public on the amendment and the amendment only? All right, back to the board, are ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the item as amended stands before us. Mr. Hurley?
All I was just going to say is, in the agreement that we will work on with them is, we'll have it as the invoices come in, they will pay 50%, so that it's time go, you know, we would get it as that project's going along.
Okay, and just as was kind of asked earlier, but let me just ask it again, is we are 100% certain that the funds for this project are available?
Yes.
Okay. Could you explain the cash flow you mentioned about us getting the grant before construction begins? So this is not a reimbursement grant?
No, it's a little bit different. The LotSIP one is that when the town puts out the design and then we go out to contract, there'll be a low bid. The state will take that low bid. They would add 10% for incidentals and 10% contingency on top of that, and then they would actually give us the check before the project even starts.
Okay. What if the 10% incidentals and 10% contingency are not enough due to whatever happens during the construction of the bridge?
Well, if the design costs for the projected construction go up, they, the state has, can modify that, I think, within 20%. More than that, they would, we'd have to go back to the state and ask for more money on that. For if we uncovered something unknown or whatever, it would be just like any other bridge project in the sense where we would have to ask that money back, but there is no guarantee. But that's with any project, even the one that was already approved.
So what you're saying is the first 20% of excess costs would be an administrative add-on to the project?
Correct.
All right, and above that, we'd have to actually get the state to approve additional money?
Correct. And then again, if for some reason that wasn't covered, Bridgeport would still, would share in as part of our agreement.
Okay, could we make sure that that clause is also in the agreement with Bridgeport? It's not just about the design cost upfront?
Yes. I share in your same concern.
No, that does leave a little bit of exposure in the sense that if we're 90% through the bridge and we're running over, we'll probably have to finish it, rather than leaving it there, going back to the state, waiting for additional funds to come through, but we've got
Is that with tide mill?
We've got a 20% buffer on that. Bill, can you explain what happened with tide mill?
We, we had to go back to the state for money, and eventually, they did grant us the money and reimburse the bridge, but it was a little bit of a lengthy process.
We had to fill again, right?
Yeah, for a year or two, we were a little bit on the hook, but we got the money, and it was all paid for as
And I think for a variety of reasons, we were perhaps a little bit late with our paperwork in terms of applying for the costs on that.
Well, on that one there, just to clarify, there was an extra item that was involved, and at that time, the state legislature halted any new funding for that particular program. And so they considered our new request, not as an extension, but as a new request. So eventually, we did get it, but that was the whole thing.
So if the first batch of money is agreed to, we're as close to 100% certain as we can be on that, the, any excess still might be at risk?
Right, but again, the way I look at it is, before, we had 1.2 million, so if you wanted to look at what the past grant was, we have significant cushions where this one is much of a benefit, as opposed to that. And then the last thing I just want to say, with that LotSIP, if for some reason it ever gets turned down, within the next day, another municipality would jump all over it. These are highly competitive grants, as you can see, but it would be covering 100% of eligible construction costs.
I think the other issue, from a public safety standpoint, this is, not only from public commerce, but from a public safety standpoint, this is a very important bridge to have strengthened, so that we know that our residents, our businesses, and any commerce that use it are in good shape.
And then, I know we're really tight on time, but I just, again, want to mention to the board, we are still waiting for King's Highway and for Valley Road Bridge, what we call project authorization letters. And when we get them, we will come back to the board on those particular projects. We would have presented them now, but we don't have a definitive amount. So once we get them in, you know, we're hoping it will be soon, in the next month or two, then I'll come back to the board. But I just, I didn't want us, you know, anyone to think, oh, well, why didn't you mention that beforehand? So I just wanted to cover that.
Any further comments from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public? Okay, the item as amended is before us. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Hurley, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Item 9, non-recurring capital, to here, consider and adopt bond resolution To here consider and adopt bond resolutions appropriating funds for the cost of certain nonrecurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. I have a motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
All right, as we look at this, and I got to ask you to just take a look at your packets here. We've kind of modified this presentation over the last couple of years. So, I'm looking at section three. Section two lists the projects. Section one, there's a summary sheet that lists section one, two, and three. This lists all the different projects. This is just a table of contents for the packet, financial information, then the projects themselves, and then three different bond resolutions based on the length of time that we're bonding the item.
Yep.
So, we'll go through the projects and then determine if we're going to make any changes to the bond resolutions and what will end up modifying those bond resolutions and then passing the overall resolution. By looking at the overall resolution, all three items are before us now because it's part of the backup for that resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
So, all the bond resolutions are before us now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, let's look at the section one, the financials. And this includes a list of projects and shows you how they're broken out by five, 10-year bonds. It also breaks out the capital projects and goes through listing bonding situations and schedule of outstanding debt to give us an overall deal. Can I ask Mr. Mayor to step us through the financials on this? Do we understand what we're looking at here?
Gentlemen, let me actually say this forward. We do this once a year. It's for all capital projects, over $100,000, under $1 million. And we do bond issues based upon the life, we divide the life periods up into five, 10, and then 20, 20 or more, and present bonds. The, if you look at exhibit two, it's interesting, you see that on the left, there was a proposed capital workshop, September, shows that those are the items that were presented at that time. So, you can see how they fluctuate. If you go on the right-hand side of the page, see what's currently before you. The amount is about $2 million less, excuse me, $1,920,000 to be closer to exact. And you see that the items on the right-hand side that are identified with the number one on the, to the left of the item in parentheses are items that are carried over, items in the number two, that are identified as number two are new. And then, the items on the left that are unidentified have been dropped. This has limited impact on, that's the town side. Look at the board of head side. You see, on the left-hand side, the proposed at that time was $2,001,000. As opposed to going down, it went up to $2,008,000 approximately. So, they kind of offset each other within $200,000. There's negligible impact on the waterfall. And if you flip to exhibit four, which shows, given our current waterfall, our current expected budgets at 2% inflation per year, shows what the debt service as a percentage of budget would be. So, we have the history there from '13 through 6/30/16, which is our current actual. And then, given our debt service plan and our waterfall, it shows a 10-year projection there where it will be over that period of time. This does not include anything from the WPCA, which is a whole nother ballgame that you guys are going to be dealing with. And then, if you go to exhibit five, you see the fiscal year ending '17 forward, what is anticipated, given current information. Obviously, you know, obviously, bad word. I would, it's probably unlikely that we'll only be $133,202,000, but based upon what we know now, that's what it would be.
Any questions?
Let's say the resolutions are real straightforward. You know, they're almost, other than describing, other than the language that describes the project, it's pretty much boilerplate. And the exhibit, and each one has an exhibit A, which identifies the projects related to the specific resolution.
All right. Any questions from the board? Mr. Bateson?
Aye. Exhibit two.
Exhibit two.
I guess it's more along the lines to you, Mike. When you, when we put this together, the request, I assume on the left-hand column, the stuff that was on the capital plan workshop, it didn't make it into the bond resolution? Are these things you sat down with department heads and said, do we need this this year?
Correct.
Okay, so, it's basically, I, these items didn't go away. I expect to see these in 20, next year, at this time.
Down the road, we really took a hard look at this year and said, what can we not do this year?
Okay. Now, what do you want to do? Do you want to go through each one, one by one?
Uh...
Is that how we do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
Unless this board chooses not to do that, but the, each of the department heads are here, ready to make an explanation to us if we have any questions.
So, that's what you do? You hear, you can...
So, we're on, so we're now on nonrecurring capital, section two. And this kind of goes through, lists the backup for the projects one at a time. And what we'll do is just take one of those up at a time. And if we have any questions, we can ask those, otherwise, we'll just move on to the next project. Is that okay?
I'm, yep.
All right. So, first one up, at least as it's laid out in the packet, is the Hulse Farm Road Bridge. Any questions on that? And Mr. Hurley, you're here to answer any questions to that, correct?
Yeah, I have a couple on that one.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Mr. Hurley, I think before you had just said that in this particular one, I believe Westport's the lead agency?
That's correct.
And I think before, when you told us, we're the lead agency for Ash Creek.
Correct.
So, it's incumbent on us to fund the design fees.
That's right.
So, would I expect the same here?
Well, it's kind of reversed. We're be, just like, we're acting as Bridgeport on that other one. We, Westport would be paying the invoices, and we would then be reimbursing Westport for the design.
Okay, so, right now, we're authorizing, basically, what I'm authorizing here is a reimbursement to Westport through design costs.
That's for the design of the bridge, right. Again, assuming $300,000, we cut it in half to 150,000, so that's correct.
Okay, and on this one, this one, it says that the state may cover 50% of the design, but on the other one, they didn't?
The other one, originally, they did 50%, and we got it up to the LotSIP, which was 100% for the construction. On this one here, the...
Nothing's changed?
Nothing's changed. The only thing, though, is the eligibility. Right now, the eligibility of Hulse Farm Road, we're making an assumption right now that it's 50% local bridge program. The actual program will come out March 1st. So, we'll know definitely by March 1st if this would be reimbursable, 50% design, 50% construction. So, if it is reimbursed 50%, then we could probably reduce that number from 150 to 75.
If the state covers that one?
If the state, right, if they approve the local bridge.
Okay, so, you're saying the design, you're estimating design costs at around $300,000?
Correct.
And right now, I'm approving 150 for our share, but that might go down if the state agrees to cover 50%?
That's correct, yes.
How much of the construction cost is covered by the state?
Only 50, that's 50% as well. It's 50% across the board.
So, at this point, are we including any, we're not...
No, none of the construction...
Approving any of the construction costs at this point?
No, because typically, what we'll do is, when we go out to the design, we go through the QBS process, hire consultant. The consultant then will do a three-structure study, pick three different bridges. We throw it by the public, we throw it by the neighborhood, find out which is the best bridge suitable to the neighborhood and for functionality and for economics as well. And then, from there, they'll do a preliminary cost estimate. When they do the final design, they will have their final cost estimate. And then, from there, the state then writes that project authorization letter, and then that will tell how much they're going to cover for the construction.
And we'll have that by March 1st?
Well, no, for the construction one, that won't be for another year or two.
Not for construction, for the design.
Yeah, just for the design.
So, basically, what we're doing is approving the maximum cost for the design and the maximum share we might have. So, on March 1st, when there's new information, all that would do is reduce the obligation to the town.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bateson?
I don't, I don't have my waterfall in front of me. Did you, was this in there for the 1.5 or 2.5 million in our waterfall? Are we estimating half of that cost?
The design, the design is in the waterfall, and then usually, the year or two after, it would be for the construction.
Is there any, is there any construction component for this bridge in the waterfall?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's a year or two ahead of the design.
But it is in the waterfall?
Yes.
And it's in for a couple of million dollars is our share?
It's probably, yeah, around the $2 million mark. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I can give you that information.
We would only get on the hook for half of that, right?
That would be correct, yes. Actually, theoretically, half of that, if, let's just say it's a $2 million bridge, well, the state would cover 1 million, so then, that would be 1 million left, and then the municipality split that. So, we'd only have 500,000 in the game.
Remember, it'd be more than that waterfall, okay.
No, that's for a $2 million bridge, that half the state covered. Oh, the other thing is the state local bridge program used to be designed on percentages. And there was a year back in the 90s where we only got 27%. Then, when the new census came out, we got up to 42%. But a lot of towns felt that was unfair, and so, they did it across the board, 50% for municipalities.
Okay. Mr. Timney?
I'm okay with this. I do remember in the waterfall chart, I think we have had discussions about this bridge. Let's move it forward.
Yeah, I'm all on board too. Just as, if this is a time to chime in on design, please, I want pedestrian, you know, sidewalk.
Oh, okay, yep, that's one of the things we would consider, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, if we're building bridges, make sure that bikes and pedestrians can get across them as well.
As a member of the bike and pedestrian committee, they'd be thrilled to hear that as well, so, yeah.
Well, don't we try and do that with all the persons who've been holding?
Yeah, no, actually, yeah.
Very definitely.
This would be a good one for that as well.
But it's good to remind us because historically, we have it, so...
Tide mill.
And some of the underpasses.
Exactly.
Right. All right. Who's going to discuss South Benson Marina dredging with us?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hurley.
Joseph Michelangelo, Director of Public Works. And I got the aerial shot just so I could reference it and put it in some context. The, the South Benson Marina has well over 600 boats. The access is, this is the boat basin here, the access is through the Ash Creek into Long Island Sound. That was largely, for navigational purposes, man-made back in the late 70s, late 60s, early 70s, approximately 40 years ago. Occasionally, from time to time, the channel has to be dredged. So, the one, the worst critical part of the, of the access from the boat basin to Long Island Sound is the pinch point over here between Town of Fairfield and the St. Mary's Point, which we call it in Bridgeport. And this 300-foot section over here wants to come over towards Fairfield. So, the last time we did that, after Storm Sandy, there was a major influx of sand in that area. So, in spring of 2013, we did dredging over there to create the 100-foot channel from here to there. That's what we need over there. So, that's the critical pinch point. But to get to Long Island Sound from the marina out there, you have to go along this navigational channel, probably about 500 feet past the end of the fishing pier, until you get substantial depth to, to get into Long Island Sound properly. So, over the years, and once again, I started here in September 2012, and a lot of that you get through visuals, through taking soundings. This, this was taken in the winter, so you don't see the channel markers there. But our guys take the buoys in, they take them out every year, so we have a sense of how deep it is. Through reports for our users, for when boats run aground, we do have a sense of when it does start to creep up on us. So, approximately, I think it was probably in late spring, summer, we had Race, the leading coastal engineering firm in this area, out of Stratford, takes some, basically, bathymetric, which are inverse topos, how are we doing with that channel? And it does show that our channel, which should be, on the navigational charts, it shows it at minus seven, but we have spots that are creeping up to five, to four, to even lower than that. So, that's why when we got wind of that, that's why we, in September, when we discussed the waterfall with the Board of Finance, we introduced this as an item. I'm not sure if it was in, in out year, but we brought that to the Board of Finance's attention, that this is something, especially with the permitting involved and the bidding difficulties, to get it in the queue, if we want to get this in a reasonable timeframe, we need to fund it sooner rather than later. That's what this request is, to create a, I believe, in the 14 points, we cited the depth of what the goal is, I believe it's seven, eight feet depth which will accommodate our largest boats, our largest sailboats, and buy us quite a few years to push it out to the future capital expenses. In this, we still, we still have to do some testing. In this assumption, I believe all the times we've dredged this in the past, we test the material, we want it to be granular sandy so we could put it on our beach. Obviously, we want it to be full of pollutants. But that whole exercise between the gradation and the, and the analyticals is about a $30,000 exercise. So, even though we did some work over here, we haven't done the, the full testing necessary for the permitting and for determining where we're going to put it. But this proposal assumes that both the sediment and the analyticals are going to be good, and we can nourish our beach with this material that we dredge. And just as a point that's mentioned in there, we are not doing anything on the boat basin here. The boat basin's in pretty good shape depth-wise. The only issues where you start to have problems with depth are on these slips over here, and it really doesn't affect the overall performance of the marina. It just, every once in a while, you have to sacrifice a slip closest to the land portion of the marina. So, this proposal does not include any of the boat basin dredging, which, a lot of that is maintenance dredging, which we probably could do at much lower cost, doesn't approach a capital project.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, okay, go ahead. Prior to Sandy, when was the last time we did this, the channel?
I'd have to look that up, the history of dredging. So, over the 40 years we've done, I could get you a schedule of when we've done the various dredging over the years.
What would be, what would be your estimated, how often should we be doing this if we don't get storms? What's the industry average? Or is it specific to the velocity of Ash Creek?
It's specific to this, so, you know, when we were, I believe it's listed on your, on your time schedule, as these improvements should last 10 years. So, going through the, I think that's what the bombing requirement, or the bombing extension was, probably between 10 and 15 years, at least 10 years, probably 12 to 15 years. And once again, that's affected by, by storms and weathers and patterns, but something along those. And, you know, once, you know, and the depth that's chosen, not just the boats, but, you know, even after you get behind this 500-foot point, Long Island, it's not very deep beyond that either. very deep beyond that either, so we, we really don't need to go much lower than, than our lowest point in the sound.
So I guess not, Mike, I guess nothing has changed with, a lot of this has to do with St. Mary's by the Sea encroaching in. I guess Bridgeport, there's still been no change in their attitude towards this channel over the years, right? That it's always been our problem.
Pretty much, because it's our boats, including our police boat and fire boat getting in and out of there.
Yeah, but I mean, still, I mean, it's, it's just never a conversation with them, right? When it comes to this?
I don't know what they have coming out of their other recreational items.
I don't think.
But Joe, have we had a conversation with them recently?
One of the things that we tried to do, and we've submitted grants to this, and this was through, I think, through somebody, through a planner in the city of Bridgeport, and I believe Dr. Robinson, and that's her name from the Ash Creek Association, they had a, a pretty good proposal, I thought, to sort of reconfigure this sand spit, St. Mary's there, to sort of make it more rectangular and give it more of a recreational quality to that. So we submitted several grants to that, including community development block grants, which we were highly successful on. So that would have done a couple of things. That would have given Bridgeport a, a better usable recreational area over here, but just by nature of that, it would have scalped out quite a bit of this area here. So, you know, we've had, you know, we've had some engineering done on it, we've applied for grants.
Those discussions and that project didn't go anywhere, though, right?
Correct.
We couldn't get, they couldn't get agreement between the Ash Creek Conservation Society, Conservancy, and the city of Bridgeport to do that.
So we, so we did pursue those things, but, yeah, thus far, you know, we, we didn't, didn't have the legs thus far.
With respect, during those discussions, with respect to the dredging, the channel itself, that Mr. Bateson asked about, any, did we make any requests to Bridgeport to help with that? Any?
Uh, not for, no, not, no, we have not.
I think we have in the past, and it's just never gone anywhere.
I can see that. I'm trying to figure out what they use Ash Creek for, other than just recreational boating.
Yeah. I think, I think up here, there may be like one or two docks, private docks.
Well, there's some for the private docks and, and.
Kayaks and stuff.
Kayaks, that type of thing, for other low draft type boats, that, that the dredging is not important to or significant to. Any further questions from the board?
If we're making requests of Bridgeport to help, this would be a low priority. There are other things I would, I would ask them to chip in on, which we, we do.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Michelangelo? We're not voting on this, but if it's okay with the board, I'd like to go to the public since we have this in discussion at this point.
Sure.
All right. Any comments from the public on this item? All right, thank you. It's back to the board, and we'll move on to the next item. Next item for us is the Burr Mansion Kitchen Upgrades. This is for $228,000. Mr. Jaylee, would you?
Taxation.
Very good. Please, fill us in.
Okay, and I'll just start, because I've been involved in the construction part of it, and Mr. Jaylee talked about the programming part of it. Last couple of years, we're fortunate to get to get some funding for the Burr Mansion. A lot of work has been done. From the town end, there was $150,000 appropriation, probably about three years ago, which addressed a lot of the nuts and bolts of the building. The electrical services into the building, the wiring in the building, a lot of the asbestos, environmental issues associated with the building, some plumbing issues. So those are really the nuts and bolts of the building that we really needed to address, because it was at the critical mass point. Following that, we received a $500,000 steep grant through the state of Connecticut to do some major rehabilitation to this building here. We did that, we had a set of architectural plans, which we put out to bid. It's a historic building, construction's high, amount of qualified contractors is low. When we put it out to bid, we included this part of the kitchen as an add alternate. The way the bids came in, we were not able, and we knew it once the bids were received, the $500, $500,000 funding did not come to the level to address this area here. So this part of this, this is a, you know, part of the bid specs, which was drawn up by David Scott Parker, this kitchen area here was not able to be addressed in the, in the $500,000 renovation that was performed, which largely was restrooms, emergency access, a lot of the fire protection services. So currently, so this over here, it wasn't, we able, we're able to do some structural repairs, we were able to remove all of the existing flooring, ceiling, sheet rock here, so we do have another kitchen on the other side, the same way as it's been for, you know, 50 years plus, but we have this area here, which is prepped for a kitchen, if we want to discuss it. I have this copy here, I have some other copies that I could give you individually, so I don't expect you could read these architectural plans.
They were in our packet.
And I was, okay, and, you know, this estimate, both myself and Mr. Jaylee, we did have a bid price on it, which we thought was high, we did work with a contractor, Concrety, to come up with some budget prices, so I was involved in some of the, well, I was involved with Mr. Jaylee in coming up with this construction estimate, and we do have a 20% contingency. And I'll let Mr. Jaylee speak of why the kitchen is necessary.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, Mike Jaylee, Fairfield Museum. As the Board of Selectmen know, the Fairfield Museum has a management agreement with the Town of Fairfield to oversee the community use of Burr Mansion, and we also work with the town very closely to ensure the historically appropriate maintenance and preservation, restoration of the structure. Over the past more than 40 years, Burr Mansion has been used as a place for celebrations, weddings, big, you know, community events for generations of Fairfielders. There have really been no capital improvements to the property in that time, so the, the work that we've been doing over the last two years has been really long overdue. And as Joe mentioned, thanks to some generous funding from the state of Connecticut and an additional grant through HUD, we were able to do about $600,000 worth of work in this building that has repaired a lot of structural issues, new fire suppression, new fire egress, new bathrooms, ADA accessibility, the whole, a whole very important part of this, which really addresses a lot of safety issues and access issues for the use of this building. So the, the proposal that's before you today is to, as Joe mentioned, to complete the last bit of the planned work that was unable to get completed, and that is the kitchen to this, which is really one of the most vital aspects of the functioning of this property. The, the tiny, tiny kitchen that has been here for 40 years is really a safety and use concern. The vent hood is under code and often doesn't work, the fire department is often called there to respond to issues around caters, the appliances do not work, the size is tiny, so, sure.
I, I'm sorry, I, we got, we basically approved this the last time, because this was part of the scope of work, it just didn't get, it didn't factor in.
Right, just, you know, given the fact that when we got into construction and had to address some structural issues and things like that, there, there wasn't sufficient funding to complete this part of it.
Correct, right. So I, I have two questions. One, I do plan on supporting this, so I'll only go out there, I'm not asking hard questions. The Burr Mansion Kitchen Upgrade, the HVAC, that's for the entire building, that's not just for the kitchen, correct?
It is just actually for the kitchen.
Is it really?
Yeah, code requires that, with a ventilation hood, so because this is a commercial cushion, kitchen, it requires a ventilation hood, code does require that the replacement air for that vent hood be conditioned, be heated and cooled. It's a unique code to Connecticut, I believe, or this area, so it's, it seems a little silly, but we do have to put a three-ton air conditioning unit in just to serve this. It will also be accessible to other use in the building, but it is particularly just required for this.
So the vent hood and fire suppression at $15,000 and the HVAC, that's all for one system at $30,000?
The HVAC provides the replacement air for the vent hood to vent it out.
All right, and that, that's just for the kitchen?
Correct.
Okay. After this kitchen project, are there any other things which haven't gotten done, which you're going to most likely come back to the board for help on?
You know, there are some, there's some minor maintenance things that we work with DPW on a multi-year plan to do. I know at some point, and we haven't really determined a, a timing yet for it, we'll probably have to come back to this board for the roof, but by and large, with the work that's done, the Burr Mansion will really be up to snuff and be a safe and much more usable place for the community.
And when would this be open again?
The kitchen?
Yeah, the kitchen.
Uh, well, it depends on the pace of approval. I believe it has to go before RTM, does it not? So, you know, should that happen, I guess in April, probably, March, April?
Probably February, if you're going to the Board of Finance.
I mean, I, we're, we have plans drawn up, engineering's done, we're ready to go out to bid with this. This work can go on while the events are happening in the space, so we can begin this spring on it.
Ideally, the kitchen should be done by the summertime?
We would love that.
Okay.
Got a lot of weddings lined up.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
All right, just within the 228, how much contingency is in that?
That includes a 10% contingency. It is 10 because, as Joe mentioned, this entire space has been gutted, all the walls removed, all the flooring removed. We have really looked in every corner and made sure that there's no surprises as far as asbestos or other sort of mitigation issues.
Right. With this, when this is complete, what's your estimate of the impact on rentals for Burr Mansion?
That's a good question. So currently, there are about 40 events a year used in Burr Mansion. We get a lot of demand for additional rentals that are turned away, frankly, by the condition of the kitchen and other parts of the facility. So we anticipate that, you know, with this, we can easily move toward 50% increase, if not more. And just so, for, for the Board of Selectmen's point of information, the income generated from this property is, part of it isn't turned back into covering its maintenance costs and its, and its operational costs. So it's, increasing the business here benefits the town, and that's our goal, is to really make this wide, more widely used.
Does that make Burr Mansion, in essence, self-sufficient at that point? Would it need any subsidy after that?
Um, you know, I think we'd have to look at that. The town has taken care of things like snow removal and things like that. I, I think, it depends on what you define as subsidy. So utilities are currently paid by the town, as is the landscaping and the snow removal. Our goal would be that the income generated here would take care of, of future maintenance and capital improvement.
I guess that's what it'd be interesting to see, and kind of what the, when it's done, what the projection for revenues are and what the projected expenses are.
Sure.
For the mansion and property going forward, so we know how much of an impact this is having.
Sure. Well, we do report to the, the town at the end of every fiscal year what the net is, and, you know, we turn that back into the maintenance of the building, yeah.
Okay, does that do it at the end of the fiscal year or calendar year?
We provide that, I believe, in September for review with you, and then when we, and then we submit the budget for the subsequent year based on our revenue projections.
Can you give me a copy of last September's?
Sure.
Just so we can see that.
Absolutely.
Perhaps share those with the board, so that we all have that.
Sure.
Mr. Bateson, you have a question?
Yeah, currently, the revenue goes to Fairfield Museum.
Not in, not the entire revenue. The Fairfield Museum is paid a, a management fee that basically covers our staffing, we have a Burr manager who schedules, we have staffing that's there for every event, so there, there is a fee that's generated to the museum to cover those costs, supplies, towels, you know, that sort of stuff.
If I went to write down Burr Mansion, who do I write the check out to?
It's written out to the museum.
So you get the money?
We get the money, and then we report on it, and then whatever surplus is left over, we work with DPW to direct it toward maintenance and repair costs.
Okay, and Mike, I saw where you were going with this, and right now, under the agreement, we're, if I see an uptick in revenue because of what they're doing, I would like to see them start assuming more of the landscaping and stuff like that.
That's what, that's where I'm trying to get to.
Yeah. I'm totally with you on that. I, I support this, but if there's going to be more money to be had, they got to start picking up more expenses. Is that, it seemed like where you were going with that, because we're still under the agreement on the book for.
Well, one of the issues, after we've invested 600 grand last, another 220, you know, 800 and change, 800 grand and change, we've invested in this. Now, Mike, to your point, and no one would argue the fact that the town didn't do anything for 40 years there, so that's a huge amount of catch-up in terms of looking at this, but I think that the question becomes, what does it take us every year to run Burr Mansion? And, you know, how close to self-sustainable are we, so that, that this is in essence off the tax rolls from a standpoint of using any taxable income?
We will continue to, you know, report those and, and work on projections for you. Just to keep in consideration, there is a lag time for this, so, you know, businesses that is, we, we schedule this out usually two years in advance, and so upticks in revenue will not be immediate, there will be a little bit of a lag, but we will continue to report projections and, and look at reducing the cost wherever we can.
Well, no, and what I'd like to do is see that project, projection of the next few years. You said you had Sacred Heart come in and do a business plan for this or something?
We did, we, thanks for reminding me. We worked with graduate students at Sacred Heart's Jack Welch College of Business to do a, a business plan projection that showed these capital investments will have a significant impact on the business and also on the related economic activity. And I know there are a number of folks here tonight for the public comment who are caterers and other businesses that use this facility, so an uptick in business not only benefits the town directly, but benefits related economic activity in the community.
Okay, but for the direct costs and direct expenses and direct revenue, if you could kind of lay those out, if you have to ramp it up for a bit, that's fine, just so we have a realistic expectation of what we're, you're projecting out in the next few years, so we can see the impact on that.
I'll have to provide.
That would be very helpful.
Sure.
And especially if you've got the Sacred Heart work to, to build that on. Good. Any further questions from the board?
Thank you, Mike.
Any comments from the public? Yes, please, if you'll come to the podium, and please give us your name and address.
Excuse me. Good evening, my name is Rosine Schlella, I live on Bronson Road here in Fairfield. I am a native Fairfield person. I'm an owner at festivities, we are commissaries in Norwalk, we work, been working at the Burr since 1984, with a kitchen that we actually painted ourselves and held the doors closed to the ovens. And I want to speak to, not to say that there'll be immediate resources in terms of new events, but because if there's an oven there, if there's a good kitchen there, there can be smaller events. Right now, with weddings, as, as Ms. Jaylee said, there's a two-year in, in advance of bookings, but with smaller events, you can pick up many more events that are two months out, three months out, if the kitchen is there. Right now, with a cook tent and a tent out back, that is separate from the building. But with an inside kitchen that works properly, the building will be used much more, and that type of event fills in all the gaps when it's not wedding season. So there's more of an opportunity for almost immediate revenues compared to even the wedding business, so I just want to support it in every way, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please just come up to the podium, give us your name and address.
My name's Sean Russell, 35 Unis Avenue here in Fairfield, and I also own Cinch Food here in Fairfield, cater in Fairfield. And I'd just like to say that there's a, right now, we have a beautiful facility that was built in the North Pole without heat, and in order to use this facility and book the facility, the kitchen has to, you know, has to be able to handle the events. And right now, all the events are done from outside kitchens throughout the winter and things of that nature, and by, you know, spending the money and upgrading the kitchen, it will make a huge difference in the amount of events that are booked at this facility. And it's one of the most beautiful buildings we have in town.
Good, all right, thank you very much. Any further public comment? Again, if you'll just come up and give us your name and address, please.
Colleen Murphy, I'm Orchard Hill Lane, Fairfield. I am the president of the Fairfield Christmas Tree Festival Board. We have been putting on an event for the last 34 years consecutively, so we're probably the most consistent renter of that Burr, of any, of any organization. We have a two-week rental time and a law, I don't know if you've ever attended, but it's a, every year, we give all of our revenue to charity, and the charities change each year. For us, the, to have a functioning kitchen would change everything for us. We, right now, must rent tents outside to, to accommodate our parties, and then another cook tent, which is extremely expensive and cuts away from the, what we can do for all of these charities. So it's, the kitchen for us is an incredibly important part of our event, and the Burr is really our second home. So we, all of our board members would deeply ask you to consider building this, and can we get it before December?
It'll be up for the summer.
Yeah, the summer. You have until the beginning of November, because we need it after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Fitzsimons, I'm a past president of the Board of the Fairfield Christmas Tree Festival. I've been connected with it for almost 20 years. Quite frankly, I'm just shocked at the condition that the mansion Quite frankly, I'm just shocked at the condition that the mansion has been in all these years. Nothing has ever gone into it. We didn't even have toilet paper holders in the bathrooms. So this is a really important part of the festival and the mansion and future revenue, and I think we should totally support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
My name is Maura Sargent, and I am also a past president of the Fairfield Christmas Tree Festival, and I live on Burr Street. You know, just kind of reiterating what's been said, and the, one thing that struck me, especially two years ago, when the condition of the house was so bad, that it flooded, and the bathrooms flooded, all over the guests, in the first floor, and the trees, like the maintenance is so long overdue that it's become a bit of an embarrassment for us, and especially as we have up to 2,000 people coming in through the doors every year, and these are not all residents of Fairfield, these are people coming, you know, realtors are bringing their prospective buyers to see the jewel and the crown of the town, and it looks awful. I mean, you can't even look at, have caterers bring in, you know, brides and grooms and thinking of their glorious day, and looking at the condition of the kitchen. And I know it's very hard, I think, for anyone to project whether this is going to be good for the town or not, but I don't see how it, we, you don't really have a choice. We have to fix this. The kitchen revenue will go up because people won't be renting tents, and now you have a full-service catering hall. It's nothing but a win-win for the town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Ken, just state your name and address, please.
George Zandi, I live on Barton Road. I own Abbey Tent. So the tent, whatever it would go, so it's not a good thing.
Sorry.
But you're really, you know, being part of this town and going to the events at the Burr, and we do the tenting, and you're absolutely right with the cook tents, it's just essential for, just to have a kitchen that is just usable and doable, because you have a great venue. And it's not that if you just did the kitchen, you have to think of the fact that people will come in to the hotels, to the bars, to this and that. So it's essential that you get a great kitchen, and that plan is a perfect fit. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any further comments from the public? All right, thank you. It's back to the board, and we'll move on to the next item, if that's okay?
Yep.
All right, next up is the Woodside Circle Rooster River Stream Stabilization and Restoration. Mr. Michelangelo, is this one yours?
Both myself and Brian Carey will present.
Okay.
This matter was brought up, this has been existing for years. It's the portion of the Rooster River, which the best landmark is behind Sumption Church. So it crosses Cornell through a culvert, which we just rebuilt that bridge 2012.
Is it good?
Probably. That's good.
I'm good.
So it crosses Cornell over here, and then it runs behind the building on Sumption Church, and it comes precariously close to this existing house, which has been vacant for a while. But this whole water course is a typical urban water course, is that it's crowded by the properties around it. Because our water courses now have higher peak flows, the old repairing channel wasn't meant to hold the amount of water, the velocity of water that's in this channel. Rivers want to meander, they want to do slaloms down, they don't want to go straight. So we're having a lot of those typical problems. These are all, obviously, private properties that front on Route 59. There is town open space over here. It does cause, so what would we do here? Proposal, we create a better stream corridor with better side slopes, ripraps, so we're not getting erosion, so we're not getting the sediment transport downstream. There's a couple of the critical areas, like I say, where we have to make more structural type repairs behind the church building over there and this curve over here. And I'll let Mr. Carey talk about some of the other environmental benefits and how we go about doing something like this.
Hello, my name is Brian Carey, Conservation Director for the Town of Fairfield. So this project dates back to, really, 2006, when they did the first study on the property, they hired Ty and Bond. They've actually updated that with a hydraulic study in 2012. Some of the effects that are currently occurring are, because this property at 236 is actually built in a legal wall, flood wall, that's actually within the floodway. The house was in foreclosure, and the town was negotiating with the bank, but the bank and their investors had actually sold the house, so this is coming in to resolve a violation soon. We've been talking with the new prospective buy, people who bought the house, to resolve the violation. So as part, a first part of this project is they're actually going to have to remove the wall that's deflecting a lot of this water in the stream course that's causing a lot of this erosion, so that will have some basic...
And that's causing erosion on the property of people that are across the water.
That's right, because what's happening...
So in essence, they're losing property every year because of that illegal violation.
So what's happening is, as the water is coming down here, it's actually being kind of slingshotted off, so we're in the process of resolving that, resolving that violation with the property owners currently. You know, the study that we did provide to you from 2012 is actually March draft, had a couple of different, had a couple of different recommendations, but one of them is actually to strengthen the bottom of the stream bed itself, to prevent the actual shifting of the channel, and to anchor the material in the channel, because that's what's causing a lot of the sediment transport. And then basically come in here and do some bank stabilization. So the hydraulic report that was prepared kind of identified the issue, but hasn't provided actual structural, structural design to resolve the problem itself. The project, we would have it designed and permitted, and then go out to bid as part of the approval of the money. But I could answer any questions. The town actually is lucky that we own the strip of land on the western side. This is actually managed at open space, so there is adequate area to address a lot of the issues that are going on, plus have staging area for construction and stockpiling. Any work that would be performed to stabilize the bank here would, you know, be done by temporary easements or something like that, but we also don't know what the final design would be to rectify the situation.
All right. Any questions from the board? Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, Brian, thank you. Like you mentioned, the wall, that wall really bothered me, that somebody would put up the wall, but yet, at the same time, I guess if I lived there and the town wasn't doing anything, I'd probably be desperate enough to do something on my own, so I'm kind of torn.
Well, I'm looking at this and saying that wall, basically, by correcting this and a removal of that wall would protect the grand list, because as long as the other properties across it, multiple other properties across it are being eroded, they're losing value.
So, so the, this house, basically, when the wall was installed illegally, it was installed back in 2009, 10 timeframe. They did, we did issue a notice of violation. The problem is, is that the house soon went into foreclosure, so it was hard to track the person. When we found out that this house was in foreclosure, we, I was working actively with the bank to try to come up with some type of deal that we could actually buy the house and remove it. Under the current, this house was built in 1964, under the current inland wetland guidelines, and even with the FEMA regulations, this isn't something we would approve. This thing's kind of, where it's positioned in the floodway, and also within the watershed, is causing a lot of the issues. So while I understand why, the need for the person to build a wall and why they felt that, the property, the position of the property in the floodway is actually causing a lot of the issues. So in a perfect world, this house would cease to exist, we could straighten the stream out. We're kind of working around this problem now. Again, they're coming in for a new permit right now, we're going to make them comply with the existing floodway regulations and also the inland wetland regulations. So that will correct some of the problem. One of the things is that the wall actually extends on the town property, that will be removed, we've already discussed that with them. So rectifying this, some of this issues will lessen the impact that is currently occurring across the stream, but it still will need structural stabilization because of the extent of the erosion that's occurring. And we're making up for lost, you know, poor decisions that were granted, you know, way before regulations, even the parking lot, and this area's expanded so much that it's actually sheet-flowing a lot more water into the stream course in that area. And there's some structural things that could be done by approaching the church, which we plan on doing.
All right, thank you. Any further questions from the board? Any comments from the public? You've been through this before, if you could just give us your name and address.
I'm Dick Mahusky, and I am the chairman of the Flood Erosion Control Board, and I just would encourage you to support and approve this project, because the photographs that Brian included with the, in your package, they don't do it justice. When you go there and you see the terminal wall of a storm drain that's just hanging out in the breeze, and half the, half the root balls of trees all the way down the stream are just hanging in there, it really needs to be restored, and as all the urban water courses, they need to be constrained, because they just tear people's property apart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would reinforce that, having had a chance to visit some of the properties on that side, there's significant damage, and you can see their property literally being removed by erosion every year. Any further comments from the public? Back to the board, any further discussion here, or are we ready to move on?
Right.
All right. Next up, from the Fairfield Parks and Recreation, the Tomlinson Middle School Turf Field.
Good evening. Anthony Calabrese, Fairfield Parks and Recreation, here to discuss the Tomlinson Turf Middle School Field. Tomlinson turf was put in back in 2007, so it has hit its 10 years of life expectancy. It's a heavily-used field. As you can see from the pictures, it's worn down. There are plenty of places where it is, the seams are coming up, we've re-glued them, but we've had the consultants come out, they've done some testing on it. It has met its end of useful life, so we are requesting, you know, the money to replace it, hopefully for the summer. The goal would be to bid this in conjunction with the Fairfield Ward Project, get a better deal, obviously, because they're putting their turf in too, so if they come down and do two fields, we'll drive that price down, hopefully. So, take any questions?
Mr. Tim here?
Thank you.
Right ahead.
The Ludlow Field was much more expensive than this house, though.
Right, so for, for Tomlinson, it's a smaller field, it's only 89,000 square feet, but Ludlow also included a track. This has no track, this is just replacement of the turf. You know, we're building in a little contingency in that money, the $500,000, in case they take the turf off and the drainage needs to be redone. So there is money in there, but I'm pretty confident in that $500,000.
Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, why, why are you Parks and Rec doing this as opposed to BOE?
Well, there's only, it's a great question. I couldn't tell you what year or when this eventually, when this all happened, but really, the only fields in town that Parks and Rec doesn't control are the ones at the high schools. We maintain all the other fields, through DPW as well, obviously, and the contractors, so we use all, Tomlinson has it during the day for PE classes, after-school activities, but pretty much at, after 4:00, 4:30, it's all Park and Rec activities or other town organizations that rent the field through us.
How many turf fields do we have in town now?
Three.
The high schools and Tomlinson?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Public, obviously. Prep has...
When did we do this, when did we go from grass to turf in 2007?
2007.
If you had to do all over again, would you stick with grass, would you stick with turf or go back to grass?
Turf. We get more use out of the turf, and obviously, it's cheaper maintenance-wise.
Because it's available more?
Well, it's available more, you don't have to, you don't have to cancel in the rain, and it's just the fact that it doesn't wear as much as the turf. So you could put the football teams on there, you could put the lacrosse teams on there, they don't tear it up as, they don't tear turf up, obviously. Put them on the grass field, they tear it up.
So you're saying we use our heavier, we put our heavier sports on the turf?
We do.
To preserve our grass?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Tim here?
I was going to say, I'm a proponent of the turf fields, I use them all the time. I used it last weekend. Here in the Northeast, having an opportunity to run out and play football with your kids on a Saturday or Sunday without having to deal with mud and cold, wet nonsense, so I support this, and I utilize it. The sun melts the turf faster and the water disappears, so you could have snow all around you, and you could have a nice big green stretch there for kids to run around and do what kids should be doing, as if we live in the South.
Agreed. Any further questions from the board? I think that certainly from a weather standpoint, and having the turf back up and running after a rainstorm, not just during a rainstorm, I think that speaks highly to it. Do you have any input on why this is down for a five-year bond as opposed to a 10-year bond if it has a 10-year life?
No, it does have a 10-year life. In fact, really, we hope to expand that to 12 if we're lucky, but no. When Jerry put this request in, Jerry Lombardo put the request in originally, that was what he had put it in for, so, no, but we could put it out for 10.
Can we make a note of that and have the Board of Finance correct it if needed? Actually, I think that the note should say, we asked the CFO.
Okay.
Come back and explain to us why it, that it was put down as five years as opposed to 10, and hopefully get that information to us, and assuming it passes today, and to the Board of Finance before they take a look at that. If that's okay with the board?
I think that's a good...
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. We'll move on to our next item. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Next up, the H. Smith Richardson New Pumping Station. Mr. Grace, could you come up and step us through this?
I'd like the kids to stop playing football, I'm going to practice greens. Actually, you want a crest of these, I've got these things. I'm Peter Grace, the Golf Course Superintendent for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got them three on the 14 points, you can ignore that, because that was an older price, or a price I got beforehand, but I have the price in front of it. Basically, the pumping station...
What is the current price?
It's in the, it's, well, $136, plus I have for, I put in for $150,000.
Okay.
And the price is $136, we have to pour a concrete pad and do all the electricity, so that's, that's why it's...
So the $150 on our charts here is correct number?
Is a correct number, yes.
Full installation?
Yes. Full installation, house, keep it out of the, keep it out of the weather. This, I mean, if you see the pictures in that 14 points, you can see it's been out in the open since 1988. I put a lien to when I first got there, and it was just a lien to. So this thing's been out in the elements, been in since 1988.
Can you just tell us what the pumping station does, and what does it pump, and where does it pump it to?
We, Aquarian, I'll bring up Aquarian later, but we could get the city water from Aquarian, and it comes into a pit into the golf course, which it separates, you know, for the potable water lines for the maintenance building, the clubhouse, and up to the driving range. Then we have another separate line that comes into the irrigation pump house, and it boosts the pressure, so you get the proper operating pressure, and keeps the pressure and the gallons per minute all equal. So we also added a couple of years ago the softball field, so we're also going to boost the water up to the softball fields, to water the softball fields too, and the driving range. So it comes in, it just gives an extra boost to send it all over the golf course to where we need water, is basically what the pumping station does.
Okay.
1,000 gallons a minute, 70 pounds PSI.
So when you see those automatic sprinkler systems come on at the golf course, this is what's allowing that to happen?
That's allowing, you have constant pressure, and when the heads come on, then the pumps kick on. What's happening now is I got two big pumps, and the pumps kick on, I'm only watering a little bit, but I'm, I'm just using too much energy, too much water, and this new system will have like a little chocky pump on it, so we're just out there hand-watering, it'll just, it'll just give you the gallons you need, it doesn't have to kick in. They have Aquarian showing up probably every six weeks, because we just, when the pumps kick on at night, when I'm watering a lot, it's just like, it's draining the pipes down on Morehouse Highway, and people in Easton, the water's going, the pressure's going up and down all over the place. So this will be a big help for Aquarian.
This will solve that?
What's that?
This will solve that?
Yes. Yeah, because I get the Aquarian in there all the time, and it's, the water, the pressure wa, the water on Morehouse Highway up through Easton, the pressure, I mean, even at my house, it's, it's up and down all the time, whenever the pumps are running, because when when the pumps kick on, sucks all the water and it's just not very efficient. It's 1988 pumps and I'm gonna be putting money this spring in to keep them up and running.
Thank you. Mr. Timmy?
Yes, two things. One, I think we should add this to the record of the meeting, it's the price on what the pump is, we should pass that to us. And two, we, we had the proposal early on for the September workshop, you had in there golf course renovation for $100,000?
Yes.
So that renovation's not happening or was that renovation the pump?
That renovation is not happening.
Okay.
That's, as we say, kick, kick the can down the road a little bit, so I'll be coming back to that next year.
Okay, so you pulled that out and took the pump out?
Yes.
The $100,000 was part of the 10-year plan, right?
Correct.
Correct. What year are we in that plan, six or seven?
That's seven.
So we're-
It's pretty high up.
So we would, we would, this would have been year seven for $100,000?
Correct.
So in essence, we're taking a year off from the 10-year plan and we'll, the plan at the moment would be to reinstitute that next year, so if this were gonna be reset, year seven, we'd then do re, year seven next year.
It'll be an 11-year plan.
Is there a tank up there? Is there a water tank up there?
No.
So basically, we're drawing right off the municipal water supply.
Right off Aquarian, yes.
And this new system won't have a storage tank. Basically, what we're doing is we're boosting the water. What's the water pressure coming in? Do you know?
Eh, it's about 45, 50 pounds.
And we want it at 70?
70 to 80, 80 pounds per, per square.
Okay. How many, now we have two pumps there, how many pumps are we gonna wind up with?
We're gonna end up with two pumps, but it's gonna also have a jockey pump.
A jockey pump for the low use?
For very low use, yes.
Any further questions from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Thank you, Mr. Grace.
Thank you.
Move on to the next item, which is the Stations Maintenance, Facility Relocation and Consulting Design. Chief McCarthy, would you step us through this?
Yes, good evening, Dennis McCarthy, Fire Chief. So the, you have the 14 points and I won't go through that list, but by way of background, we have identified in our stations report, which you have, although, Mr. Timmy, I've just received his copy tonight. That was a process that we undertook over the course of this year, primarily because it was made very clear to me by the Board of Fire Commission when I was hired, that they wanted me to pay particular attention to the condition of the stations because of their age and condition. We spent a year looking at that particularly for addressing some of the main drivers in our maintenance budget, which we have begun to address, but also for the long-term needs of the department. The two stations that we have identified as a priority, the Southport Station, which is owned by the Southport Volunteers, as well as the Jennings Road Firehouse. All of our stations, as you well know, operate 24/7, get a considerable amount of wear and tear, and there has not been a major upgrade in any of the facilities, but in particular these two. We, the two projects did exist in the capital waterfall in previous years. There was a proposal and $500,000 identified to move the maintenance facility from Station Two down to the new training grounds, One Rod Highway. There was also $350,000 for some renovation to the Southport Station. Neither of those, in my opinion, are advisable. Certainly moving the maintenance facility and our equipment into that salt, salt air environment that is in a flood zone makes the maintenance facility down at the One Rod Highway not the best location for emergency service. The renovations to Station Four that was anticipated in the waterfall previously, that money did not come anywhere near the total funds needed to renovate the Southport Station. Also, the Southport Station is in a very dense community and it doesn't, it's not geographically located to serve the entire district that, that apparatus responds to. So we want to look at very holistically first, all of the locations of existing firehouses to make sure that they are well situated for the best response time that we can offer the community, and then look at various options to relocate, either renovate, because I think renovation of Station Four still remains an option, but we need to fully vet it, or if it's too cost prohibitive, which we think that it is, identify options for relocation closer to the post-road. Simultaneously, if we're gonna do studies on stations, the Jennings Road Firehouse, which houses the maintenance division, would also need to be evaluated, because there may be opportunities to relocate the maintenance division into a new Station Four as opposed to either renovating the existing station to accommodate it or put it in, into a third location. So we want to do all of this work simultaneously to build a strategic plan for replacement or renovation of those two stations.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I do. The 500K to relocate the maintenance facility, is that 500K to build a new maintenance facility there? Was that originally-
That was the, the idea and it wasn't very well-defined in the records that I had available. It was to build a Butler Building on the new fire training grounds down on One Rod Highway.
So you don't believe that it's possible to build with money which has already been allocated?
It wasn't allocated. No, it was removed from, both of those, those numbers were removed and it never received funding.
All right, when were they removed, do you know? Do we know, have that? When do we remove them?
So that was-
Is that a function of so much as they're being removed?
It was forecast.
They didn't come before this board for approval?
They were forecast in future years, never received a hearing. So I don't think that they were ever fully defined.
What we've tried to do with the waterfall chart is the department has to put down what their projected, their needs might be. As we get close to that timeframe, we look at both the current funding resources as well as whether those needs have changed over time. So as much as the waterfall, we wanna have something that captures everything people are thinking about, so we know what's on the table or may be on the table, but just being on the waterfall chart does not mean the project is approved.
I got you. So, you don't believe that it's possible to build a facility, One Rod Highway, which would, you know, withstand the weather or-
Well, it, it's just a, the way that I characterize is, One Rod Highway is not where you would put a maintenance facility that has to serve, and our maintenance facility is the busiest during storm events, and to put it down at the far end of Reef Road in the saltwater environment that could be blocked by flooding, although the property has been raised up as it's renovated, the area obviously is subject to flooding and we would need 24/7 access to that, so it's not the, I wanna put a fire station down there and I wanna put the maintenance facility that's, that maintains all of our rolling stock down there, because it could become inaccessible.
But we put a fire training center down there.
So the fire training center doesn't operate during, you know, it doesn't essentially work, operate during bad weather.
It is-
And the training center has been raised so that it's above the flood zone. Access to the training center would be impacted by floodwater.
So, and I guess that's where I'm going with the whole thing. We have a location which is hard to find right now in the town. It's, it's, well, the question's whether we can build a usable facility or not, the way I look at it, versus trying to find a brand-new location across the town which may or may not cost, I, I can't even put a number on that, but-
So, if, if I can address that?
Yeah, please do.
So, what we hope to do is, one of the options would be to renovate Station Two, and the reason why we're doing both station evaluations at the same time, because we may have options at a new location for Station Four that could accommodate our maintenance facility. And some of the conversations with, we've had with our neighborhood community is, we might find a site that is suitable both for our Station Four and the Greens Farm Station Five, as well as our two maintenance facilities. Westport is concluding a study now and that, that joint station is part of the evaluation the town of Westport has undertaken. So that may be an option for us. Station Two on Jennings Road is the current home of the maintenance facility. There is the possibility that we could renovate that, that property and redesign the maintenance space within that facility so that we don't have to move it to a third location. I have to do that work before I even ever consider looking at a third independent location for the maintenance facility. And I think that there are some great options at, with both of those scenarios.
Has the Fire Commission approved these, these items or these requests to do as far as a long-range plan?
It doesn't go before the Fire Commission comes to the Board of Selectmen. They have been apprised of the, the projects, they have reviewed the, and have presented the building and station maintenance, the station report with the Commission, but the financial application comes to the town without approval from the Board of Select, the Board of Fire Commission.
Don't they have sort of civilian oversight of the Fire Department in that?
Not the budget, that goes to the, the Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen.
I'll agree on that, but this is long-range strategic planning.
So, as I, as I said, the, the, the station report and our approach has been delivered to them, they've been briefed on it, and they have accepted the reports.
And if I might, over time, the issue of our fire facilities and their current status and location has been a topic of discussion with the Commission, not, to my knowledge, at a formal Commission meeting, unless the Chief says otherwise, but certainly with individual members, including past chairs of the Commission.
And, and the Commission had, had requested during the interview process for, for the Fire Chief and in, at some of our very first meetings, their wish that this be a priority. So I have brought back our progress on it and that we are, that we're applying for study money for that. It hasn't, I don't believe that it was a formal vote of the Commission, but certainly they are, have been fully briefed on our approach.
So do you see where I'm, sort of asking the question, should the Commission be responsible or as the Oversight Board, long-range strategic plans in presenting this, or should we have input from the Commission on what's, what's here through amendment or through, you know, basically the plan in its totality? I mean, they're the ones who we look to, to, for oversight.
So, we are requesting funds to study. The outcome of that study will certainly go, so the board has been made aware that our, of our request to, to study the, the options, and the outcome of that study will go back to the Board of Fire Commission before it goes to the funding bodies.
So I guess I would say this, prior to coming here, shouldn't the board have the decision to say, this is where I think the $200,000 should be, best be spent as the Commission? Perhaps this doesn't fit what the Commission wants to do and where they wanna put $200,000?
The, I would have to defer to either the Selectmen or the Finance Director, but the issue of the budget and the budget implicated, the budget goes to the Board of Selectmen or the Selectmen, it's the Selectmen's budget, and it hasn't been voted on by the Fire Commission. As a matter of fact, we don't present the budget until it's been presented by the Selectmen.
Are you drawing a distinction between this being a budget and this being a strategic long-range facility relocation, as it says here? I think that's more than just a budget item, that's an actual plan for the department and which direction the department should move forward in.
They haven't asked to vote on it? They have been, I mean, this has been a subject of discussion to the Board of Fire Commissioners during this process, over the course of the year. They received the full station report, we reviewed, reviewed the station report, including the section in the station report that was delivered to them, that identifies the two long-term priorities, which includes Station Four and Station Two.
Yeah, and it's also-
So, it, it, they didn't have a mechanism or they didn't exercise a mechanism to vote to approve it. But it was, this has not been done outside of their review.
I think if we go back a couple of years, I might fill in some of the pieces here. This has very definitely been a topic for the Fire Commission. One of my requests for the Fire Commission, after we had a plumbing incident that put Station Four out of operation for, I think, three days in total, one of my requests to the Fire Commission was to come up with a plan for stations and especially what we do if any station was, for any reason, made inoperable. I think that keyed off some discussions to what the locations are best for this. I think the other piece is that what the, a lot of this is, as you look at it, is a lot of it is maintenance and maintenance evaluation to go through and determine the status of our facilities. And I think that certainly that information leads to go to the Fire Commission, so they're aware of that, but the idea of evaluating status with this, I think, is something that certainly, I commend the Chief on taking initiative to get this done and laying this out, so I don't think it's anything that's done without knowledge of the Fire Commission. But to your point, there probably wasn't a vote per se, in terms of formal.
Well, whether it was a vote, were they given the option? When were they given this plan? When, when have they had time to analyze this and discuss it publicly in, in either a meeting setting or in a sort of research set? When were they given this plan? I would ask that.
So, they were given the station report, they were not given the waterfall, they're the, they, they weren't given this application.
Okay. Is that, do you think that's something they should have had?
The, it has not been made clear to me their role in approving the funds. The fund, the funding process has not included the Board of Fire Commission. The funding process goes to, to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance and the RTM. I am unaware of a requirement for them to vote on the request. They have been, like I said, they have been advised of our approach and that we're applying for waterfall money to do the study.
Yeah, I also just, again, to clarify, historically, when we've done maintenance on firehouse, fire facilities, that's not something that's come before the Fire Commission, to the best of my knowledge. It's something that's been held between fire administration and DPW in many cases in terms of directly taking place, so it's something that the Commission is certainly updated on, so they're aware, but they're not involved in the approval of maintenance, which much, again, much of this is to the facilities.
Okay, so I'm uncomfortable doing this, voting on a document which has relocation of facility written in it without the, the Fire Commission even looking at it. They haven't even looked at this. This, this, this says that we're looking to relocate a, a fire, our Commission hasn't even looked at. I think it's, I think it's out, and from the budgetary standpoint, I understand the numbers, but what we're backing up with the numbers and the actual projects written here, the Fire Commission should have a voice on this.
And certainly, it's been a topic of discussion with individual members. Mr. Bateson?
I, I see where Chris is going, I, I agree with him. I, and Chief, to your point, I see where you're, I don't just see this as a funding request. I, I'm not a Fire Commissioner, I don't, I read this document and what just smacked me is this, this is, this is a strategic plan. This is what you're getting at, and I get it. And I don't think that need, that doesn't, I disagree, I don't think that starts here. I think we have a say on that. I think this needs to be a broader discussion among public safety, ECC, everyone. If this is something that's being considered, I, I really think more parties need to be involved. I think we need to reel this thing back in. I see where you're going. I wanna see money spent on facilities. I think, you know, there's a need in, I read the thing you sent me. There's a need in the firehouses for maintenance. I'm more than willing to commit my fair share of dollars to fixing up the firehouses and giving, giving these people what they need and giving you what they need for their safety and whatnot, but this, you know, I saw what Chris saw, relocation. I mean, right now in Southport, I, I got it. I, what I think, as a Selectman, a great partnership between private and town, and I wanna see that relationship continue. This opens up a discussion that I think needs to be held, you know, we gotta reel that back in and start that discussion somewhere else, you know, among the Fire Commission, maybe the Police Commission, maybe the Volunteers, maybe that community, it's just, it's a lot. It's a lot at this point. That's where I am.
So, let me offer this. There is, without the study, what am I to offer for concrete proposals to any of those entities? Until we know that there is options available to us that are cost-effective and appropriate, that have been researched by a consultant, how do I present to all of those, those bodies a plan that could be acted on by them? Right now, we have a, we had a proposal at one point from the Southport Volunteers to renovate their building that was millions of dollars in a location that may not be the best location for the next 100 years. That building was built in 1914.
Yeah, but they might pay for it.
We have explored that option, they don't have the capacity to do that right now.
I don't know if I, I don't know if we have the capacity to buy land in Southport right now.
There are, and we have worked with Bill Hurley through this process and identify town-owned property that might be available to accommodate, and that would be part of the evaluation. Then to go back to all of those parties to say, these are our options, let's steer a path towards one of them and go through that process. Right now, if I was to say that Dennis McCarthy feels that this is the best way to approach this problem, I would expect that I would be sent back to find some experts that have done the analysis of what it would cost to develop a piece of property, what the engineering costs are, what the response times for the department, how it relates to response times from other stations. This appropriation gives me the tool to present alternatives to all of the bodies that need to be part of the discussion, including the volunteers, including the fire commission, including the town funding bodies.
And to include those stakeholders in on the evaluation. I mean, this is a request for dollars for evaluation, not for making a decision, but in terms of providing the information to make an informed decision.
I don't see where the discussion proceeds without some technical expertise to help evaluate the many options that are before us. And some of them quite expensive. When you think of, you know, properties that might have contamination on it, properties that might have blasting or ledge that would have to be taken into consideration, a free piece of property that has some of those challenges, it may be more expensive than buying property in the open market.
So, I'll go back. One, this says on the Town Exhibit 2 Bob Mayer gave us, this is a new proposal?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a new proposal, so it wasn't even part of the one we did in September? Two...
No, no, it was part, it was new in September, we submitted it in September. I think that Mr. Mayor, this appeared on the list and then it was taken off the list and put it back on the list.
All right, so if that's the case, it says it's new here. But what we talked about at the September meeting was, again, I don't want to bring up the ambulance service, but that was something which was supposed to be, or indicated this was supposed to be part of a long-range study. And that's not included in this.
So, the, we have sought a proposal from the town, from an attorney that has worked on similar initiatives and have just received back at the end of last week, a proposal that we are evaluating and costing out to determine, and at the direction of the finance department, funds for that study will come out of the existing fire department operation budget in this fiscal year. And we are working to identify where those funds will come out of this year's budget so we can move forward with that EMS study.
So I'll ask a technical sort of administrative question. If this isn't included tonight, can it be included in a month?
Yes.
Okay. If the Board of Selectmen makes a recommendation that the fire commission reviews this and gives their input on this, so that we can have the civilian oversight board, which we have appointed to do this type of work, would that be appropriate?
Yes, the only thing technically we'd have to do tonight is, at some point when we're voting on the overall resolutions, to remove it from the list of projects.
Okay.
And then it will be able to come back at any time.
I feel more comfortable with that.
So, I understand it comes off of the list, I go back to the Board of Fire Commissions at the February meeting, I come back to the Board of Selectmen with the outcome from the Board of Fire Commission, and am I still in the queue time-wise to go to the Board of Finance for this?
Now, the Board of Finance is going to review this in February, so the answer would be no. It would have to go to the next Board of Finance meeting.
Okay.
I'm not sure when that is, if they have one in March or not because of budget, it may be April for the Board of Finance. Mr. Bateson?
I'm sorry, I'm struggling with what a role is here. Mike, you're obviously much more up close to this. If this discussion's being had, this seems to me like it's a public safety issue as well. I mean, do you want to include other departments or other commissions in on this? I mean, if possibility, we're talking developing land.
I think that...
I'm getting caught, I don't want this, this opens up a Pandora's Box and now it becomes, if something happens and comes out of this study, all of a sudden the police department says, we got to move ECC out of the basement. And I'm just saying, I don't want this to be...
Let's, there have been a lot of discussions going on, first of all.
I know.
And one of the things that stopped us at every point is that, okay, what's real? What's this cost? How does that look? Does that work? Does it not work? Is that a realistic option? We certainly, we're definitely moving the ECC center out of the basement at some point. The question is, do we move them upstairs in the police department? That's already on the police department list of to-dos. That's a project that's on the capital worksheet, if you look at the waterfall chart. The issue here is, if what you're looking for is a formal vote from the fire commission, then you're right, hold it off and let's do that. If the issue is most of this information, I don't know what the commission would object to, but certainly all this is getting the commission information to have input. And to your point, as part of this process, we certainly would talk to other stakeholders as part of that evaluation, because you need all that information.
I think you should develop other stakeholders. If that's...
But those things have...
If we're steering the ship, this is not the course I envisioned. It's just not.
That is...
I thought, you know, I thought the needs were, we needed to fix fire stations to do this. When I read this, I was just like, I had no idea we were in the market for a firehouse.
We've been in the market for a firehouse for a number of years. The issue has always been...
Maintenance, yeah, maintenance.
No.
The maintenance department, yeah.
If you'll let me finish. The issue has always been, what's the cost of bringing Station 4 up to functional capacity? And is it functionally obsolete in terms of its location and size? And especially the fact that it's in the historic district, which limits things that we can do with it. And is that the best location? As Southport has expanded over time and the population has changed in their locations, do we need to look at an alternative? And on top of that, the discussion with Westport has come before in terms of, do we in fact end up sharing a fire station on a location with the Greens Farms, which also helps from a cost standpoint to reduce that. But if you look specifically at the items here, all they're doing is getting us information to move that discussion forward. It's not making any decisions, but to suggest that nobody on the fire commission is looking at these questions, I just don't see that as correct. The fact that they haven't voted on it, I won't dispute that. So if that's what you want, then let's just, when we get there, move it and then we'll take it up next.
I can just, we have, as the selectman has indicated, we have worked to build those relationships with the Southport Volunteers. I've met with the board of directors and Southport Volunteers back in May, or maybe March, and explained the concern that I had for any renovation of three to four to five million dollars of that station in a historic district, in a historic building with limited capacity to make the changes that might be necessary. We have met with the first selectmen in Westport, and the fire chief in Westport, to look at opportunities for us to co-locate a station where we're sharing the cost, even to the extent of applying for regionalization grants from the state, which used to exist and haven't been, weren't funded in this past cycle. But we have explored those options. We have been to the police department to look at co-locating the ECC in a brand-new building as a way to, again, with the neighboring police department, to look at options, could we put a joint ECC in a brand-new building to further expand on sharing costs with neighboring communities? And we have gone to, excuse me, so we've worked with the police department, Southport Volunteers, town of Westport, and the IT department to look at options to put a data center in a brand-new building to take it out of the basement at the library. So we have done exactly what you have proposed that we do in our efforts to be good stewards of the dollars that are available to the town and looking at not just solving the fire department's needs, but maybe some other needs at the same time.
But simply put, if you want to hold on this until...
I do.
All right? When we get to that point, let's just amend the resolution so that we remove this from it, that doesn't, that gives the chief time to go back and confirm that.
I would also like to add two things. One, we're having a conversation with Westport, their community, which is better off financially than we are right now. I would like to see some sort of effort on their part to make the first step in a relationship with Fairfield. And secondly, this goes to...
You don't know they haven't done that. We've met with them, one, and second, they're in fact doing a complete facilities analysis study from their fire department in terms of what they need. So they're already a step ahead of us in terms of their evaluation, in terms of what their needs are and whether a consolidated fire station would work.
Okay, so I would look for like a joint statement from the Westport First Selectmen to you, saying we're entrusted in proceeding forward and with a relationship based upon...
Right. When we get to that point, we've met with them, they're proceeding on, we've talked about this, Chris, we're just not at the conclusion yet. Until, we don't know if they want to do it, whether it's good for us. This will give us the information to decide whether it's good for us or not, because they may want to do it and we may say that's not the appropriate thing for Fairfield.
Okay, and then the second thing I'd like to add is, later on in the agenda, we're going to have a discussion about the strategic plan for the entire town overwork. Perhaps this is something which gets rolled into the strategic plan. I'll just add that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. So if I could ask that we remember to remove that when we get to the voting point later today? All right, and since we haven't had any public comment at this point, all right, seeing none, we're back here, and I believe we are now up to the Board of Ed. Thank you for your patience, and who's going to help step us through what your requests are?
I, not to the detail, my name is Philip Dwyer.
Thank you.
Chairman of the Board of Education. Tom and the superintendent will talk you through the details and answer questions. I left my wife at Fairfield Ludlow High School with a promise that I would go see a member of our church play in the girls' basketball game, and Mike is familiar with Mike Trom through the Board of Realtors, and it's his daughter. So, the fact that I'm about to leave, I would want to say that the board is in support of all of the projects that are before you. We hope that you act positively on them, and the fact that I'm walking out is more to make a commitment to a member of our church and not that I don't support the projects.
Enjoy the game.
Thank you.
That, and please tell that Ludlow Women, when they're playing, that they've done a great job over the past few years and we look forward to continued success from them.
I will do that.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen, are you up?
Thank you. For the record, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations, Fairfield Public Schools. Thank you for this opportunity to, for the Board of Selectmen to hear and consider the Board of Ed's capital non-recurring projects for 2017, 2018. We have six projects that I'll discuss, and the total request is going to be $2,785,000. The first project is at Fairfield Ludlow High School. This is the student parking lot that's in the back of the school, it's a very large parking lot, it's over 12 years old, it's been patched numerous times and covered over, but never been really fully reclaimed, which meant it's been dug out down to the base, repacked, and the new Batumina's paving done in a two-stage process. It's deteriorating. This is the parking lot that all the junior high schools students pay for a parking permit to park there. So we certainly want that to be safe for them to use and for all the public to use for any of the events at the high school.
So are we going to go, you're going to, all of them, or do you want to?
Do each one.
Okay. So I went, I'm in this parking lot often, it never struck me before as a parking lot, which was in dire need of maintenance. And then after I saw it on the list, I went and walked it again, and I'm looking at it and I know you're in the Board of Education world and looking at all that stuff, but I'm in the overall town situation. I think about all the other town parking lots we have, which aren't nearly as bad as this. I can, you know, just the eyeball test, this parking lot here, and the old town hall would be one I would consider in worse shape than this, looking at it. And was, this is also indicated as a new project and wasn't included in the package we went forward?
Correct. It was not in the waterfall submitted in September. The reason for that is, the original proposal we got, we thought we could keep it in the Board of Ed operating budget, but it was with a contractor that lost the bid through the town process. He was only going to coat over the whole parking lot again with three inches compressed to one and a half. So we're working with the town's new bid with Tilcon, Tomaso, and Garrity reclaiming to actually reclaim all the Batuminas down to original subbase, repack the subbase, and do a new paving two-step process.
How much was that?
The original proposal was like $117,000 from a local company. The other thing I wanted to say was just that because the students paid a park here, we felt that it was getting enough damage, and I can tell you that because we have to stripe it and number it every year because it's crumbling and eroding away is the sign that it's deteriorating.
All right, I walked it and I looked at it and I gave it the eyeball test and that type of thing, and I go back to what was originally said, you know, when we pulled projects off here, is there something which can wait? Or is this absolutely necessary? Or, I mean, is this, in my view, this sort of fits that mold versus, you know, I'm not, it's not the security infrastructure upgrades, it's not, you know, it's a parking lot that one could say we could stretch another two-plus years out of if we did crack filler and that type of thing.
We're spending about $7,000 to stripe it and number it each year because it is not holding up. You shouldn't have to do that. When we stripe and number, it should last a while.
So how much are we spending here, $7,000?
It's costing us about $7,000 out of our paving budget in our operating budget.
How long should striping last?
It should last a while, I would say seven years, seven to 10 years.
Have there been any incidents, accidents, slip and falls or lost legal action coming out of people getting hurt on this?
There's been two on this site. One was out front over a Batumina's curve island, and one was in the back, but not related to the parking lot being in bad shape and tripping in a big hole. We did have, if you remember, a lot of light poles that were in the middle of the parking lot and they were getting hit. We've now removed them. Each year, we've been doing a few of them to get them on the perimeter and put junction boxes flat to the pavement. That has helped us a great deal in opening it up.
Any further comments from the board on this item?
Yeah, when I, since this was new, I took a drive down there because I'm like, it's new, it's got to be bad. You know, if it made the list, it moved up and bumped some things. And like Chris, when I got out, I'm like, walking around, I'm like, this ain't that bad. That was my take on it too. Like, I'm not an engineer, but I walked around and I'm like, you know, was my driveway? I could live with that for another year or two.
Is this reimbursable?
No. Is any of this, Tom, sorry, is any of this attributable to all the projects we had going on up there?
It is part of it. I mean, that was the staging area for the Fairfield Ludlow High School project, and as part of that project, when they did the new cafeteria, they did do the handicap spaces. So you probably saw that the handicap spaces up close to the building were brand-new and nice. The striping is fairly new, we just did it for the school year, so that probably looked good. But if you walk your way down to where it all drains to the bottom, that's where it's just crumbling and you can feel it in your feet.
That's where I saw in the corner over there.
As you're leaving. So by the end of the next year, this summer, we're probably going to have to stripe it again, because it's eroding away and the students have to know where their parking space is. They get, they pay for a permit, they get a number and a tag.
So this was originally in the operating budget and it was pulled out to put in the...
Because of the cost, because it reached this amount. Certainly if it was around $100,000, we'd try and absorb that. Our paving operating budget's $150,000. We've been doing four to five schools.
For all schools?
Yeah. We're doing four to five roughly partial pieces. Like Osborne Hill, we did the left side, hopefully this summer we're going to do the right. Mill Hill, we did the front. We try to pick pieces that are real bad.
And you don't like the skin coat option?
No. What was happening was the previous contractor that was awarded the bid to the town was only doing a coat, so he was going over the top of the existing paving with three inches compressed to one and a half.
That's the $117,000?
Yeah. The proper way...
The whole parking lot?
Yes. When you have parking lots that are 12-plus years old, you need to go down to subbase, repack the subbase with a six-ton roller, and then do a two-stage Batumina's. They put the first coat down, let it sit a week... They put the first coat down, let it sit a week, then they come back and put the second coat on top.
If you do the superficial coating, how long does that last?
Well, that's what we've been doing, and we're getting three to four years before it starts to crack. Because once the underneath is cracking and eroding and settling, a top coat looks nice the first couple of years.
Do we, the town, does the town do the train station parking lot?
We can, if requested by the Parking Authority, do it.
When was the last time you think we did that?
I'm not sure that's been done in a long, long time.
Exactly.
I haven't seen that in a while.
Yeah.
I will tell you also that we work with the town on these. We try and incorporate a lot of paving for the whole town with Tilcon and Garrity.
But I know, just to finish on that, I know the Parking Authority is looking to do it in the next year or two.
Yeah. I'm looking at it as like, I've definitely seen other parking lots the town has which are far more dis-repaired than this, and no offense to the project, but I'm looking at it as a parking lot which the eyeball test tells me it's got a couple more years, and I'm hearing the striping argument as $7,000.
And again, the students are paying, so because they're paying for a spot, we wanna make sure there's no holes, crevices, they're gonna trip and fall, those kinds of things for safety reasons. So I appreciate it.
Any further questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to move on to the next item?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen, will you take us through the next one?
Next project is at Fairfield Ward High School. This is the Library Media Center HVAC Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Rooftop Unit Replacement. This unit's original to 1995. We've heard from train manufacturing that we should get 15 to 20 years out of it since it's over that lifespan. It has failed numerous times on us. It's the main heating and cooling system for the whole library. Part of the cost and the difficulty of the project is it's a very far reach with a crane to remove the old unit and put on another new unit. It needs a 300-ton crane for the reach, and it's gonna have to sit literally on the sidewalk in front of the school to be able to reach it. Some of the savings that we did find with this, working with an engineering firm, was if we replaced it with a train unit, the steel dunage and the steel in the roof didn't have to be changed, which would have been a very huge cost. It's gonna be able to sit on the same dunage that the old unit sat on. So that was good news when we worked with an engineering firm on this. But that's about it.
Any questions from the board?
I support this in all of our schools. I hope we do make the upgrades and we can, so I don't have any issues.
Any questions, any questions? Out of this morning, the 250, by any chance, are we expanding the coverage of the air conditioning, or it's just limited? No sheet metal work?
No.
Nothing? Mr. Cullen, excuse me, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Mr. Cullen, will you take us through the next item?
Next project is at Fairfield Ward High School, the Artificial Turf Field and Running Track Replacement. This was originally installed in 2005. I provided a lot of the answers to the 14 questions, but generally, this field and all our fields get a lot of use in the district. They're always being played on, not just for the athletic events, but for a lot of reservation groups. So the lifespan is expired on this field. We had a G-MAX bounce test done on it. They said we will probably get one more year out of it, so this season will be it. They did see a lot of sagging. This we didn't see when we did Ludlow High School's field last year, which means the sub-base might be sinking in areas. So once they tear the field off and all the crumb rubber, they'll check the base and the irrigation system before they put down a new field. The other thing we want to do differently is, on Fairfield Ludlow High School, we accepted a credit to reuse the crumb rubber because the cost was very high on the project and the bids when they came in. It's $50,000 to vacuum up the crumb rubber, put it into bags, and reuse it. So we accepted it on that field, but talking to the engineers and to consultants for this new field, they're recommending we don't do that, that the crumb rubber actually breaks down into smaller pieces. You don't get the long lifespan with new crumb rubber. The other thing we're looking at is the crumb rubber will be green. They're finding out now in new studies that the black collects too much heat and sun and gets hotter than it needs to. They're coming up with green. It actually comes out white, they color it black. They're telling us now, the consultants, to color it green, that it won't get as hot as the playing athletic teams play on it.
In five years, it'll be white.
So, the other thing we're doing is the running track. We're gonna do the same thing we did at Ludlow High School. It doesn't get replaced. It gets filled in, the cracks sealed, and then a new coat of paint and striping. And the other thing we want to bid as an ad alternate is the long jump location has been problematic. It was designed originally to be in with the two fields on the side, but the soccer games, the field lines are larger, and we've had a few instances where kids playing have fallen down and slid and came very close, if not hit their head on the long jump curbing.
Is that the pole vault?
Pole vault and long jump. So we're gonna work with the engineers to see if we can relocate them to the outside end zones and see if we can afford to do that as ad alternates on that field.
I definitely support this. I think it's, I worry about the kids playing, especially with the high-impact sports, football, lacrosse, soccer, high school kids get bigger. If the turf isn't kept up with, more injuries are more prone to happen, so, again. And I use the turf fields as a resident with an eight-year-old and a four-year-old just to find grass in the wintertime, so I think-
I think I provided some good pictures to show you what Fairfield Ludlow's look like brand-new next to Ward. You can see the color discoloration, and that's because of the crumb rubber and the fibers wearing down and a lot of the patching we've been doing there. Thank you.
You didn't relocate the pole vault pit for Ludlow?
No, we didn't. It wasn't as close. Ward's is a little bit closer by a few feet.
But this also looks like this pole vault pit is level with the surface, so there's nothing that protrudes up, so there'd be no way for somebody to hit their head on that.
Right. The other thing we did, though, at Ludlow's is the engineer picked up rubber coating, the curbing, which it wasn't before, it was raw concrete.
Is that this?
So, they've gone back over it.
This is Ward. Is that what he wants to replace?
Well, he wants to replace this component of it. It's not that, I don't, it's not the runway you're-
Sure. Seth Frye's here tonight, the Athletic Director of Ward High School?
Seth Frye, Athletic Director of Ward. I live on Lynbrook also, 102 Lynbrook. The curbing on the pole vault pit in particular is very close to, I don't know if there's a picture near it, but the yellow soccer lines, which they also use for rugby. And, you know, kids are getting taken down in rugby out of bounds and, you know, coming awfully close to that. And we had a state game, girl soccer game, where a girl did a slide tackle and also came off to close that.
Can you explain the difference between the Ward pole vault operation or pit and the Ludlow one? Because the Ludlow one here looks pretty much level with the surface.
Right.
And if you could explain to us why that's not a problem?
Well, yeah, Tom might be able to better explain that. I know right now at Ward, the part of it is because the turf is so worn down that it is actually below, and the curbing is like sticking up. So, yeah, when we get brand-new turf, I think it's gonna be more at the level, but in, the turf doesn't get any better, so as time goes on, it's gonna, you know, do the same thing, it's gonna sink down.
Right, but we didn't move Ludlow's, we left it the way it was.
Ludlow's not as close to the yellow lines. If you go out there and walk it-
Doesn't it look close?
It's not as close.
Looks as close.
Well, the pit, the large pit itself, the running part. And if you see Ludlow's, notice Ludlow's doesn't have the white border, that's because we cover the concrete with rubber to try and help it on that site.
And, you know, talking to other athletic directors and being in a lot of the other facilities in the league, and some of the people have come out to talk to us, this was a design that was done right back when both the fields were done, a little bit, and everyone's really moved away from that. If you go to, you know, pretty much everywhere else I think I've been in the league, the, most often, the pole vault pit and the long jump are both, you know, outside, you know, behind the end zones, and in some cases, you know, completely, you know, out of that area. So, you know, it's also, it's very problematic even, you know, with practices and things like that. You have lacrosse balls flying around and, you know, people trying to do the pole vault, and it's very difficult to do. We're trying to accommodate, you know, so many student athletes at the same time. You know, we're limited in terms of, you know, what we can have with our lights on and things like that. No one wants to, you know, stay late and have to practice at night anyway, so there's also that concern, whereas if we put them, you know, outside the area, we have the lacrosse and, the netting at the ends of that, which help with things as well.
No argument. I guess I've got two ways to go with this. One is that, my question is still, why did we leave Ludlow the way it is? And if it's such a safety problem, what is our plan to move the Ludlow long jump pit and pole vault pit?
Yeah, we'd have to look at that and see if we want to put that in the long-range plan for the waterfall.
Well, if it's a safety issue for student athletes, as was just related to us, I would think that would be something that would be sooner rather than later, because this is all about safety of our students.
We also have to look at where we'd locate them at Ludlow. Ward has more room. It was easier to find a couple of locations for it where Ludlow's is a little bit tighter.
Even at the tracks?
To relocate.
Even with the track running around both, aren't the tracks the same size?
Yeah, but if you actually go out and walk them, Ward has more room behind the end-
I've actually tried to run the tracks on occasion.
Okay. Next time you're there, you notice that Ludlow's is real close to the paving and parent drop-off by the auto shop, where Ward has more grass and field.
So we're thinking of moving it outside of the track, actually.
Outside of the track area.
Yeah. Because we do the high jump right behind the end zone, that one end zone. So it would be over near where the batting cages are now, actually.
Okay. So again, you convinced me it's a safety hazard. What are we gonna do about Ludlow?
Well, we're gonna see what we get for the bids, too. It's an ad alternate. We're not sure we're gonna be able to afford to do it with the project, with the budget constraints.
Again, you hung me up here. If it's a safety issue, how do we not do it? You just convinced me it's a safety issue. How do we not do it? You can't argue both sides, Tom.
I guess we looked at, you know, we look at how many students have fallen and come close to it. It was brought to our attention with this job, not the last one. The only thing that came up last time was coating the concrete, because it's pretty standard when you do a field and a track that you coat the curbing around the pole vault and the long jump. I don't know why it wasn't done originally. So we did coat it with a rubber coating for that location, but all I can tell you-
So is coating acceptable to bring it up to a safe level of operation?
It's an option.
So we could just coat it?
It's possible we could just coat it.
What's the difference in cost between coating it and moving it?
Quite a bit. I can get that for you.
It's gonna be a lot.
Right. So my concern is, how do we make Ward safe and Ludlow not safe, guys? I mean, I'm stuck.
We'll move it.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll move it.
Okay. I'm trying to be supportive. You brought up the safety card, and if you can bring that up, you gotta plan out one here. You can't just say it's kind of safe, and one's safer than the other. Okay, any further questions from the board? Same kind of question. This is on for five years, yet we keep talking about a 10-year life or better?
That, what I'd like to do is go back and look at what we do at Ludlow's last year, because I did think it was 10. So Ludlow's was done last year and was bonded the same way, if we can, I'll look that up and see if that's the time.
Could you please get back to us with that as soon as you can on that, so we can take a look at that, all right? And no further questions from the board?
No.
All right, if we could move on to the Blake tennis court replacement.
This project is at Fairfield Ward High School. The Blake tennis courts are the ones behind Fitz's house in the back. These have been patched a couple of times. Patching them, golf, tennis courts are supposed to last 10 to 12 years with intermittent patching of cracks, sealing it and repainting. This court has had that operation done several times, and I listed the date in 2005 when they went through a renovation upgrade, and that's when they were named Blake Tennis Courts. As you can see from the photos now, the cracks are very large. What we're finding with this court is when it was originally installed, there were no expansion joints put in for the courts to move against each other. So we're seeing more cracks and worse cracks than we should be. So this project and proposal is to replace them, replace the four tennis courts. We'd like to look at, and work with the engineer, to look at doing an ad alternate for a concrete post-tensioning system. Some of the newer tennis courts going in are done with concrete and post-tensioning. They're warranting them for 20 years against any cracking, whereas the batuminous is only guaranteed for about 10. So we're gonna look into doing that here and definitely putting the expansion joints in and getting them repaired enough to play.
Mr. Tinnear?
Yes, are they gonna go, still be green and red, or they going to the blue and green, like most of towns?
Probably leave it to the Athletic Director to decide.
Would you pick the color? That's not heard of it.
Yeah. One of the things we do want to look at is possibly adding a fifth court with the games and the athletic events that are happening. The four courts are a little tight and they're running too late into the evening. We have four in that location and four out front that we're calling the NAPS Highway Courts. But it's very difficult for them to run two different locations on that, like that on one campus during a tournament. And Athletic Director has mentioned, if we could even add just one more court, it would help tremendously. So we're gonna look at that. Color doesn't matter on the length of time it lasts. There's no color that works better. Just generally, the expand, what I've been hearing from the two engineering firms we're working with is the expansion joints are most important and key.
Were the Owen-Fish courts put in with expansion joints?
Normally between the courts, they do on both sides, although it helps with the cracking.
Can I expand on adding a court?
Sure.
The difficulty with our situation, only having four courts, is the best of my understanding explanation, in typical high school matches, there's seven matches. So we start with four. As soon as one ends, we get the fifth going, so the next one ends, sixth, and so on. We're the only school in, I believe, the whole league that has only four courts. Most places have six, so as soon as one ends, you're starting the last match, and you're getting done in time, you know, before it gets dark in most cases. We have like the headlights going on early in the season trying to, you know, finish these matches, or sometimes we just, we can't finish them. And, you know, certainly not gonna have, you know, lights or anything over there, so that's one of the challenges.
How many courts does Ludlow have?
Six.
Six, all in one spot.
Altogether. So we've got four, and then four in the front, and, you know, we'll use that for JV in the front sometimes, you know, same challenge. Our JV girls go to Fairfield Woods. I know, I think Ludlow's JV goes to Dwight.
Tom's.
Maybe. I'm not positive. So that's one of the challenges, and I know it's been this way for a long time. When we were at Fairfield High School, the matches were very short, very short. So it didn't matter that we only had four, I think, there. I think we were just, we were so good that it was just, we like kind of dominated them. And, you know, obviously, that's a little bit more challenging now. Ludlow's still very successful, I know, especially with the girls and stuff, but that's just one of the challenges, and again, early in the season in particular, it gets dark and it's really hard, so we've been trying to be creative and, you know, with, you know, work schedules, so we're at away matches early in the year and stuff, but it's just, it's difficult, so if we could get even one more, it would be a huge help.
Is there reimbursement for athletic sporting?
No.
No?
Not as a renovation like this. Not as a renovation like this. I think if we were redoing the school project and included some athletic things, we could, but not as separate. I think also the property constraints. We believe with our engineers, looking at the site, that we might be able to add one more. Property starts to drop off and it gets into wetlands. But that could be why they did four there and did the other four out front.
Does the current pricing that you're requesting include five courts?
Yes.
So if you only do four, what would be the number?
Should be a savings.
Okay.
I can get you those numbers if you wanted to.
And then second question is really, again, we're talking, there's a 10- to 12-year life and potentially 20 if you use that new technology. But we're still funding this over five years.
Yeah, so that should probably be up to 10 at least.
Again, take a look at that and at least it would be good to have that conversation with the CFO so we know where we sit on that. Any further questions from the board?
So there's no breakdown of actually the number for a fifth court and the details?
No, but we're working with our engineers. We're going to try and do those as ad alternates. The key right now is to replace what's there so that it's plate condition. Then we can do ad alternates as we bid it. And we're going to be working with the same engineering firms that are going to do the artificial turf fields. Just turns out it's the same companies. Malone and Broom has come in and helped us and BSC Group. And they've done other ones for the town and us.
So if we approve this tonight?
Grouping it all together, we're hoping we can get everything together, engineer and bid.
So if we approve this tonight at 3:25 and the bid comes in for the fifth and it increases to 4:25, do you come back for $100,000?
No, we probably wouldn't do it.
You wouldn't add the bid?
We'd look at all the ad alternates, hopefully to get it at 3:25 or less. That's our goal.
Okay.
Not to come in over.
Okay. And if you make the decision not to do the fifth court, would the 3:25 drop down to 2:75?
It could. It should come in pretty aggressive. And then we would say we wouldn't have to bond as much.
Okay. Mr. Bates, any questions?
Yeah, I'm on board. I was out there. It's time for these.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none back to the board. I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
Next item is Thomason Middle School, partial roof replacement. There are eight roofs that are at the end of their useful life. The original installation was 1991. They had a 20-year warranty that expired in 2011. So the good news is that with our roof preventive maintenance program, we've been able to keep these roofs in fairly good shape, stay on top of them, keep the scuppers cleaned out, the drains cleaned out, any patching, expansion joints. So we've got good life out of these roofs. It's time to replace them. This project will require a building committee to be formed because we will be able to seek reimbursement on this. As I mentioned below on page 32, what our reimbursement rate is and how much we would get back. We approximate the rate at the time for Fairfield will be 25.06%. We should receive approximately $221,428 in reimbursement if it's all found eligible.
Mr. Bates? Procedure. Sorry. I want to see this move forward. I don't want to hold it up. But Mike, to you, I'm approving this. Don't walk me through the process. Doesn't a building committee come back and ask for the money? I'm bonding this under capital nonrecurring. I would have expected to see this on an agenda in February with a building committee right behind it. No?
For the larger projects, very definitely. When we have, you've got two quotes on this. And for something like a roof, we've gone out and we did, what was it, the Fairfield Woods roof we did recently?
Fairfield Woods, we've done, we've done Mill Hill.
But one, we just added on to a building committee that existed, wasn't it?
I don't know. Special project.
You're right. There's something.
Special project standing building committee?
Yeah.
Mention your name first.
Hi, Sal Morbido, Managing Construction, Security and Safety. I believe at the time that we were doing Dwight, there was thought of adding it to the charge of the Fairfield Ward High School Roof Building Committee. It ended up being given to the standing special project.
Did we do a roof at Fairfield Woods Middle School?
Yes, we're in, we're doing that.
Okay, who's doing that?
We did part of it this summer. We'll finish it.
Who's doing that?
Special projects.
Okay. So we basically handed off to special projects. They were already doing a roof at Mill Hill?
They did Dwight, two years ago. They did, I'm sorry, two, three years ago, they did Dwight. They did Mill Hill. Last year, this past summer, they did Fairfield Woods. And they'll have Fairfield Woods to finish this next summer.
And in essence, these items have been bid?
Yes.
So we don't have to go out to bid again?
No.
Oh, not for the price in here, no?
No, no. This is, this is an estimate from our past experience.
Okay, so it does have to go out to bid and the building committee would do that. Because doesn't the building committee have to do that in order to qualify for the reimbursement?
Right. It has to be given to a building committee.
You're correct.
The funding path historically, the roofing projects, my time here, 11 years, with the exception of Fairfield Ward because of the massive size of it, has been done through capital nonrecurring. Funding came first, handed to the standing special projects building committee.
Ludlow had a roof component to it, too. Ludlow High School.
Well, that was part of that major project, correct.
Okay, so you're correct. There would be a building committee. We'd either give it to special projects or form a separate committee.
Is that up to them? Is that your plan? You plan on giving this to the TS?
No, no, it's not up to them.
It's a first selection.
So what do you want to do? Do you want to approve this tonight? Or, I mean, I want to see the project get moving. I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, do it wrong. I want, it just seems unusual to me.
As a timeframe, this earlier funding through capital nonrecurring allows us a time, if we get the funding in February.
So we won't rule ourselves ineligible by approving this without a building committee in place?
No, you won't.
Because they will go out and get a bid, which requires, the state doesn't care if we have an estimate ahead of time, other than the fact that we need it to file initial paperwork for the reimbursement, if I'm correct.
Correct.
So I'm not ruling myself out of the box here by?
You need the three resolutions, a building committee and funding, but the.
So now I'm not going to see?
Typically, we talk to the special projects building committee, see if they're willing to take it on.
So I'm not going to see the appropriation come back before me?
Until, yes, you will, once they're, well, actually, no, not if it falls, not if it falls under this number. If it goes over this number, then you wouldn't.
Right. So it's probably not going to come back before us because they'll probably give it to, you'll give it to, or do we give it to?
Well, I would give it, I would ask special projects first to see if they're willing to take it on.
And if not, then you would come to us and ask for a committee?
Then we'd have to form a building committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
We would agree with that. That's working quite well with them. And they've got enough of them now that they know the process.
I would encourage us to move forward so that we can take advantage of any reimbursement which is there before lowered and taken away or whatever.
Do it now before it disappears. Good point all around. Any further questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Mr. Cullen, the last project.
Last item is on 42, last request. This was not in the waterfall scheduled in September. It was for 1819. We had put a placeholder of $500,000, knowing that working with the police department and our schools, we've been seeing some new things come in that we need to do during our lockdown processes and things we've been noticing. We felt these were important enough that we'd move them up a year. And the number is less than the $500,000 placeholder we put in. It's at $335,000. It's really going to encompass three major items. The first one is on emergency first aid kits. During the lockdowns of the schools, we know that we needed to do some things for the children and the staff when they're in lockdown for anywhere from five minutes to two hours. One of the things that came up were emergency kits, to have even Band-Aids and some polysporin and some wraps and things for the children when they're in their classrooms hiding. So we've got a company that we worked with on some other purchases for our security devices called Ready America on page 46. And they do make up these small kits that we can put in every classroom that will be available for the teachers and staff if they need them. The next item is the PA external systems. During some of the lockdown scenarios we've been going through at the schools, we've noticed that there are times where there's a lot of students and staff outside and they're not hearing what's being called inside the building. So the police worked with us on this and said, you know, if we could put an intercom system outside, that would improve. The last item is a lockdown emergency abort button. This is going to do multiple things for us. It's a panic button shut off during the lockdown that can also tie into some corridor doors. So for a building like Mc林 elementary School, their kindergarten wing, kindergarten classrooms don't have doors on them. It's an open design. But we can tie this system into the corridor doors to that wing so that if the principal or a teacher wanted to hit this button during a lockdown, it would lock those corridors, doors down. You wouldn't get through that corridor. We also found that we can tie this into a message board, into a fire alarm system, multiple things we can do with this process. So during lockdowns, the schools will be as safe as possible.
Has this been reviewed by police?
Yes.
Has this been reviewed by the fire marshal?
I don't know what the fire marshal has. Has the fire marshal seen these?
Were this last night?
I have to look to Sal.
No, I haven't reviewed it, but I'm not aware of the fire condition.
We did talk to the fire marshal about the doors, the corridor doors, because we're going to tie those in. He approved that. But I don't know if we've shown him this booklet for approval, but we have shared it with the police department.
Okay. Could I ask that you share it with the fire marshal as soon as possible and just confirm, assuming this goes through this board, confirm at the next board that the fire marshal has signed off on that, please?
Sure. Definitely.
Because we need both parts of that. The challenge on all the security items is how to keep people out while keeping the people inside safe in case something happens on the inside. Any further questions from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, let's go back and I'm going to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. We've got, in section three, we've got three bond resolutions. I'm going to suggest that we also look at exhibit one, which breaks out the projects by bond resolution in a chart. So we can easily see what's in each bond resolution. And we can see that, you can see that the numbers tie out to what's at the total, grand total at the bottom of each page. So the, what we're looking at is bond resolutions that cover both the town and the Board of Ed projects. So any discussion on the bond resolutions?
Yeah. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the 20-year bond resolution by $200,000 to bring it down to 2253.
Sheila, do you have that number? If you'll track those because we'll need to make sure we have.
$2,253,000.
Because I'm assuming here, it's the 20-year, 20-year.
Yep. Specific to the station's maintenance, facility relocation, consult design.
So the net effect of that is pulling that project out of our approval?
The bond resolution.
Right.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion on the bond resolutions?
I would like to do another one. Well, was that?
So that was a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second now.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? Any comments from the public on the amendment? In the amendment only, please. Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Mr. Chair, thank you for catching that, Mr. Tinnear.
This one I'm sort of wrestling with right now as I'm saying it. It's the parking lot at Ludlow High School. I'm looking at what was presented in, to the Board of Ed, at proposed capital plan workshop on 9/20. That total number was $2.1 million. What's in front of us today is $2.78 million. I'm, I'm okay with it. But again, I went and I looked at it. The eyeball test, to me, indicates that there's a minimum of a year left on that parking lot service. And I also think that we have other parking lots throughout the town which should be addressed. Looking at it not just from the Board of Ed eyes, but from a town hall perspective of what needs to get done and where it needs to get done, I, I'm borderline on it, but I'm going to make the motion to remove the $250,000 for the parking lot at Ludlow High School.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. The amendment stands before us. Any further discussion?
No, I agree, I agree with what Chris said. It's something I think we wait.
Yep. Yeah, my concern earlier was that we had some slip and falls on this section of the parking lot. And if we had them elsewhere, then it seems that, and I don't know, have we taken care of those other elsewhere parking lot sections? So where we've had the slip and, if you could, please.
Where we've had the slip and falls, we've taken care of those and repaired those properly.
Yes, we did. The one out front was due to some new lighting that had to be put in for the stairwell going down to the lower level where a pedestrian tripped over a curb, Batuminus curb, island curb. And the one in the back was picked up when we did the renovation to Ludlow High School.
Okay. You mentioned the cost of $7,000 a year, I think roughly, for striping that has to be done every year, getting the condition of the parking lot. What's the cost of maintenance to the pavement itself?
If this didn't.
How much patching, how much other stuff are we doing?
If this didn't get approved, I probably would have to use some Board of Ed operating money to do some patching because there are some areas that are really bad that I'd probably have to go over again.
Is there some history of the last two or three years? What have you done?
In that site, we haven't done much, except the removal of the light poles, junction boxes and paving over those holes. We did. The Ludlow High School project picked up the handicap spots and some areas right close around the building and picked up where a pedestrian fell, tripped. But there hasn't been much done out of our operating budget on that site.
When you paved over the junction boxes for the light poles?
It was just a patch.
Yep. Did you patch any other areas of the parking lot at that time?
Not at that time, no. Nope. And the good news on a lot of the curbing that's been redone has been picked up by our snow plow contractor. Now that we have one guy doing all our snow plowing, we hold his feet to the fire with all the repairs. It was almost $30,000 across the schools for curbing repairs and some, a couple of signs and a couple of light poles he knocked down.
Gotcha.
So that was good news. I think one of the things I did forget to tell you that may change your mind on this parking lot, we're adding two speed tables. We're doing away with speed bumps because people have learned that they can just still go over them at a fairly fast pace. We've gone to what's called a speed table. It's more of a ramp up, six feet long than a solid five-foot space, and then six feet back down. We put two of them in at Ward High School behind Fitz's house. Seen tremendous difference in people slowing down. So we wanted to add two speed tables at the student parking lot. One as you enter and one as you're leaving to slow down the speed of the students and staff going in and out.
What's the cost of the speed tables?
They're part, they've been done in Batuminus material. They're originally designed for, to be concrete, so they last longer. But the town's been working with us to try them in Batuminus because we're getting a better cost from Tilcon. But I don't have that broken out separately.
Okay. And what budget, when are those budgeted to be installed?
I don't have a number for you. I don't want to guess at it. So I'd have to get that for you to do just a speed table.
Is there a timing on this?
You'd want to do it at the time you're repaving and reclaiming. They get striped for people. We're using them for students and staff to walk across. So we're picking locations where it's going to slow down traffic and students and staff will be able to walk across with proper signage, have it striped like a crosswalk at a light. If you get the chance to see, and I think in the book I show two of them for Ward High School.
How many total were you planning on putting in at Ludlow?
Two with this parking lot and three more as we do Roger Little Middle School and the other, and another budget. But it's on, let me look at it, page seven.
So you're taking your time at the other school parking lots to put those in as you redo those parking lots?
Right. As I do them. We wanted to try them out at Ward. It's actually town, DPW, Scott Bartlett worked with us and Tilcon Tomaso, and said they're seeing great results with these. So we thought we'd try them. We did two, as you see on page seven at Ward, and we are seeing traffic slowdown.
Just trying to get a sense of urgency on how quickly we put those in based on the success we've had at Ward. But we basically wait to do it as part of the parking lot redo.
Yep. We look at the parking lots we're going to do and the locations where we're seeing difficulties and trying to do a couple of speed tables a year.
Mr. Tinnear, go ahead. I didn't mean to pot all the questions.
They're building a new assisted living facility right in that area over by the Carlton. Does the speed table affect any of that traffic?
No, they're on our property, even though they're coming out onto that shared road along Sturgis Park.
There's a picture of a speed hump in the one you gave us here. Is that what you would be replacing and that speed hump would go there sort of at the end of the tennis court? On page six, Tom.
No, that's just a crosswalk on the far left there.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a crosswalk across to the tennis courts.
So where would, the speed bump, the speed hump would have no interference whatsoever with that road, starting at what point?
No, it's going to be up by the right side where the tracking team runs across to the field to get down. You know the?
Yeah.
Sliding hill on Sturgis that everyone uses in the snow time? That cuts across and comes right by the dumpsters in the back entrance of Ludlow High School. Very busy, heavily used area, yet that's the parent pass-through and the student pass-through. So we wanted to put one there at that stop sign with the crosswalk because they speed right through it. And then one at the end because as the students leave at the end of their day, they go quite fast to turn down Sturgis alongside Sturgis Field. So we thought we'd put one before they leave that stop sign.
Got you.
And the other proposed one will be behind the artificial turf field going over to Roger Little Middle School, one in front of Roger Little Middle School, and then coming around to Ludlow High School in future.
Did this $250,000 for the parking lot, did that cover Roger Ludlow as well, their parking lot?
No. No. This is just Ludlow High School.
Just the back or the front of Ludlow as well, High School?
Just the back student parking lot. Or you talk about Ward.
No, Ludlow.
You're talking Ludlow High School. Just the back student parking lot.
So not the front parking lot?
No. No, it's very hard to do a whole school.
Yeah.
It's expensive. I mean, we're, you'll see when you drive around, we're trying to do portions.
And the back one's in worse shape than the front one?
Yes, definitely. Yes, definitely.
I didn't, I didn't walk and look at the front one. I just looked at the back one.
When is the front one scheduled for a redo?
I don't. I have a long-term plan for paving, and I don't, I have five other elementary schools that we need to go back to this summer out of our operating budget, and I was hoping I'd get this approved in nonrecurring to pick up this large lot. We've got the back parking lot of Rodgerlough Middle School I know is on the list, back by the auditorium, that's breaking up. But I don't have Ludlow High School in the near future, like in the next two, three years, no.
Got you. So would it make sense to do the entire high school all at once?
I would love to.
Yeah.
I would love to, once a year, do a whole school, but we cannot afford it. It's, you know, we're spending $150,000 to do four or five partial schools, plus this one is 250. It's very hard to do a whole school.
Any further discussion from the board?
Thank you for asking. I'm asked for some additional questions.
Thank you very much. So so far, we have one adjustment to the three bond resolutions?
And I made an amendment. I still want to hold for the parking lot.
I'm sorry.
Oh, one adjustment for the high schools, for the schools.
No, just, was that a motion on the student parking lot?
Yeah. Yeah, and Ed seconded it.
Okay.
I did, okay.
Sheila, you have that down? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I got lost in the discussion there. All right, so that amendment is before us. Any further discussion on the amendment? All right. And you're removing that, and that's changing the total amount of money for the 20-year bond by $450,000, so that's $2,300,000. Did I do that correctly?
Where do you get the 400?
450, two and 250.
We modified it by $200,000 already for Mr. Bateson's. Another 250 takes it from 2.453 down to 2.03.
2053.
No, 2003.
2003, yeah.
All right. So are we ready to vote on that amendment?
Yeah.
Any comments from the public on that amendment? The amendment only? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So Sheila, we have that number at $2,300,000. So that needs to be updated, and I think that's just in one place in this bond resolution?
Yeah, just the 20-year. Unless you have anything else.
All right. Yeah. We just need to change exhibit A. Sheila, make a note that exhibit A needs to be modified to remove those $2 amounts, and then the total for exhibit A needs to change to match And we need to, we need to have that done before it goes on to the Board of Finance. So we can coordinate that with, with finance. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote on the overall resolution?
So we're going to, we're acting on all three bond resolutions, under this resolution?
Yes, because we, in essence, edited those three. We're going back to hear, consider and act upon the bond resolutions appropriating fund for the costs of certain nonrecurring capital projects and authorizing issuance of bonds to finance those. Sheila, we moved on that initially, correct?
Yeah. To reduce, well-
Item nine. Did we, the first thing we did, did we put that all before us?
Yeah, we did. You did.
Okay. All right, then, since that item is before us as amended, any further conversation before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's done.
Thanks for staying, guys.
Thank you to the Board of Ed for both staying and letting us see all that. All right, and next up, I put down on here strategic plan discussion. Also handed out a draft approach. It was actually drafted by Bud Morton, just to be clear. And while it may not all be appropriate, I thought it was a good starting point. I thought we might kick off some of that discussion now in terms of whether something like this approach would be appropriate for the board, and perhaps also, given the hour, finish that discussion up next week, because right now, it looks like next Wednesday is a fairly light agenda.
If you want to go to next Wednesday on this, it's fine with me. If Wednesday's light-
Just want to make sure you all had this, and this was a reasonable basis for starting our discussion.
I'm not going to lie, I put a lot of my time into the cap nonrecurring.
Yep, that's okay. I just-
Yeah. I've spent some time on this, but I wouldn't mind having more of a crowd to add some audience participation on the plan.
You're not discounting the viewers at home, right?
No. And this might be the longest meeting we've had. Yeah, three hours.